Good evening. The December 6th special meeting of the Evanston City Council shall come to order. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember, when? Councilmember, when? Councilmember, Nuzma?
Here.
Councilmember Burns? Councilmember Saffronin? Councilmember Ravell?
Here.
Councilmember Reed?
Here.
Councilmember Fleming? Councilmember Kelly? Councilmember Braithwaite?
Aye.
With six members having answered the call, we have a quorum present and are prepared to do our work. The first item on the agenda is my public announcements and proclamations. I have no proclamations, but certainly feel compelled in what is the first city council meeting since the tragedy that occurred in Evanston a week ago yesterday to express, first of all, the deepest, deepest condolences to the family and friends and loved ones of Carl Dennison, whose life was lost, to say that our thoughts are with all of the victims of that shooting, with their friends, their families, their loved ones. And just to be very direct about how horrifying and shocking and troubling this event was. People across this community are hurting a lot right now, of course, and we have a tremendous amount of work to do. We cannot allow ourselves to be complacent in the face of obscene behavior like this. We cannot allow ourselves to become numb to it. We cannot allow ourselves to say, "Well, that's really terrible, but it's inevitable. There's nothing we can do." We have to really come together as one community with all of our resources, all of our partners, and everybody here to do what's possible on the investigatory side, of course, but also on the violence prevention side. And I know that everyone on this dais agrees and is committed to doing whatever's possible or whatever's necessary to combat the scourge of gun violence and create the safe and loving community that we aspire to be. With that, next is the city manager's public announcements.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of city council. Clerk Mendoza, I'd like to express my sympathies as well to the victims of that horrible event. And I would like to say that our police department is working round the clock to bring the perpetrator to justice, and we will do that. So I wanted to thank the community for coming together. I want to thank the council for their concern, and the support is much needed in this community. And so we really do appreciate the kind words and the gestures that have been so prevalent over the last week. Additionally, I would like to note that the gun buyback program was a great success, and I believe we set a record for buybacks. I think we had 53 guns that were purchased back from the Evanston Police Department over the weekend. So that was a very strong showing of public support for getting guns off our streets and keeping our children safe. So I just want to say thank you to the staff, the council, and the community for your support.
Thank you very much. Next is communications from the city clerk.
I also want to offer my condolences, and as a mother of young children, I'm also deeply concerned and hope our city does its best to dedicate all its resources to our youth here in Evanston. I have two public comments submissions, one from Lupe Orozco. He is emailing in support of the Welcome Center, and our council has received that. And from Cindy Solarsano, who's a mental health specialist, is also emailing in support of the Latinx Welcome Center. And being that I am, you know, the only Latina up here and also the daughter of two immigrant parents, I also want to offer my support for the Latinx Welcome Center, or a Welcome Center for immigrant in my minority community here in Evanston. Knowing the struggle of having to interpret for my parents from a young age and having those responsibilities and needing the guide and entire family through that, I think that, you know, children need to be children, and we should have the support available for adults and for people to be able to support their families. And hopefully, those people can also bring the experience that they bring from their cultures and open businesses here, stay here in Evanston, and make this a diverse and welcoming community for everybody. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Next on our agenda is public comment. This evening, everyone will be given three minutes to speak. As usual, we'll begin with those who signed up in person to speak in person. There will be two such speakers, beginning with Ray Friedman.
Good evening once again, everyone. Thank you for another discussion on how we can spend our ARPA funds. Thank you for all of the town hall meetings, ward meetings, and council meetings on what would be the best use for these funds for the city of Evanston. So we're talking about the best use for these $43 million. But what happened to the citizen participation and discussion on the new 2022 budget to be increased by 60 million, an increase of 20% over the present budget? You approved the 5th Ward TIF without finishing the TIF hearing discussion. Seems to be some confusion about the difference between public comment and public hearing. We need to figure out how to cut expenses, not increase them. This does not look like a healthy budget for the city of Evanston or its residents. I didn't realize until tonight, I still am not sure how many committees, departments, committees, and commissions we have, but I didn't know that there was about 120 volunteers, which means to me we have an extra 120 employees that aren't being paid. So we need to hire an extra 50 or 100 employees to add to the 800 and some we already have. It doesn't make sense to me. We need to be reducing the amount of employees by 120 if we have 120 volunteers that aren't being paid. That's not right. Why are we going out of our way with the new RFQs and RFPs to spend more money on more outside contractors for more studies and more consultants and not take advantage of our new finance and budget committee with a team of experts who are, again, volunteering their time? It doesn't make sense. It's time we stop, reevaluate, and reexamine our priorities. It doesn't make sense to me that we need to look at other communities and see. I looked at Villages Skokie, and I don't know if I'm correct or not, but I asked Google, "What's the budget for the Villages Skokie?" It said 59 million. How is it that, and they're about 10%, 11% less residents than Evanston. So how is it that our expenses would be six times greater than Evanston, who manages to plow their sidewalks, plow their alleys? And I know they have Old Orchard Shopping Center, but our expenses are tremendous.
15 seconds.
I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Candace Parks Chow.
Ouch. Okay. Good evening, everyone. I'm Candace Chow, and I've been a resident of Evanston for roughly the past 25 years, currently residing in the 6th Ward. I'm here tonight as a resident who cares very deeply about affordable housing in Evanston. I've been involved in affordable housing for several years. My first exposure to the need for affordable housing came when I was relocating my own mother from the East Coast here to Evanston. She was a very independent woman, and she refused to live with me, thank heavens. So we looked tirelessly for a safe, accessible, and affordable apartment for her in Evanston. That process showed me how very little affordable housing there was even then for working folks in our community, like my mom. Later, as a parent, I walked alongside several families in my kids' schools in looking for stable, safe housing. These families were caught in a cycle of moving from lease to lease due to poor landlords, poor living conditions, and price increases, which led them to pick up and change addresses, schools, and homes, hurting them and their children year over year over year. I now serve on the Board of Community Partners for Affordable Housing with a commitment to increasing housing stock at various levels of affordability in Evanston and beyond. So this background as a resident and an advocate for affordability is why I was so very inspired and hopeful when the city began planning for a new significant investment to increase the number of highly affordable units, supply that is lower than it now than it has been in recent history, through the South Boulevard project. I understand the council has not yet weighed in on this project, and given that, I wanted to share a couple priorities, areas, that if in your shoes, I would want to understand and be able to respond to. First, I believe, and I'm sure many and most of you share this belief, that the South Boulevard development and the city asset that will be leveraged there should rightly be used to increase highly affordable housing, this being housing at the lower area median incomes in particular. Evanston doesn't have a shortage of market rate development housing, but has struggled to meet its needs for truly affordable housing. And this redevelopment site is an excellent opportunity to address that need. Secondly, the site's perfectly suited for affordable housing, being near public transit, able to meet various family sizes and varying levels of income capacity. Plus, it's adjacent, as you all know, to the Housing Authority of Cook County property, and they're willing to be a partner in this development. Third, an affordable development will be able to leverage the increased funding currently available for affordable housing, funding I think you're going to be discussing tonight.
15 seconds.
Oh, my goodness. Making it a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to address these needs. As you know, there's no single path to making Evanston the truly inclusive, embracing, and livable community we all want, but I believe we can all agree, we're just not there yet. Increasing availability of a quality affordable housing for children and families in our community is critical to this work and shows through our actions what and who we value. Thank you.
Thank you. Two people signed up online to speak in person. Often that is done in error. Is either Lindsay Percival or Stephen Vick here to give public comment? Oh, perfect.
Hello. Good evening, city council, Mayor Biss. My name is Stephen Vick. I'm the executive director of the Infant Welfare Society of Evanston. I normally speak about early childhood, but I have colleagues that will be doing so. So I'm not going to speak on that specifically, but I'm certainly in support of all of their comments that they'll be making as we've worked closely together. But I am here to support, with a caveat, the Welcome Center that was listed. Our organization works very closely and with a lot of challenge with the immigrant and refugee community. Certainly in Evanston, we all know there's a very large Latino population. Our organization serves approximately 20% of our clientele as Latino, and many of them are monolingual. We also have programs in Skokie and Morton Grove where there's a very high immigrant and refugee population, as there is here in Evanston is growing. I think the Welcome Center is a tremendous idea. I think it does need to be a Welcome Center for all immigrant and refugees. Certainly in Evanston, there's a large Latino population, as I said, but I think all of our immigrant and refugee families and people need to have support and access and resources. It's not enough to have a diverse community. We have to be an inclusive community, which means we provide access, we provide information, we provide resources, we provide opportunities for information. And a lot of these families, and I can share very deeply with our work in Skokie and Morton Grove, many of these families are coming from the Middle East, coming from not only Latin America but also Asia, and communities tend to want to be with their own for safety, for security. And often, there's a language barrier that we all know that creates a lot of challenge for families to get that access and to find those resources. So the idea that's been presented, modeling after the Illinois Public Health Model, having a Welcome Center, is a wonderful idea. I think it's very much a positive move for Evanston to support the creation of a Welcome Center. And I think that it would be a wise choice in our desire to have a diverse and welcoming community, to have a center where we can provide information, access, resources, and services for those who don't speak English and don't feel comfortable reaching out because of the fear of whether it was their home country or whether it was the experiences they've had as an immigrant or refugee. So I wanted to share that as an organization that works very closely with immigrants and refugees and specifically the Latino population in Evanston. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes the in-person portion of our public comment. We'll now move to online comments, beginning with Mike Vasilko, who will be followed by Betty Coens, and then Carol Teske.
Thank you. I'm going to start backwards of my list I sent earlier today. And this is probably directed to Councilmember Jonathan Nuzma. So there's no mention whatsoever of any funds for climate change initiatives in the discussion you're having tonight. There's nothing in the memorandum that talks about setting aside X amount of dollars. And it should come out of the ARPA funds, in my opinion. It should be a substantial amount to be held for actionable items, a list of which to be determined later, since I know you haven't had time to look at it. But this is what you campaigned on, and I think this is an opportunity, the opportunity, to make a significant statement for climate change that we've all ignored. Going backwards, so the economic development, you know, always amazes me how they want to spend money, talking about Orienton and Chicago's streetscape. We don't need that. Business district planning, yet another study, don't need that. Business district ambassador, we need another ambassador. We've got people and organizations that are always promoting the downtown business district. Outdoor dining infrastructure, that's something that should be dealt with by the shop owners if they want outdoor dining. Place making, another example of how to waste some money. You know, a million dollars of direct support to a small group for this development, I guess, of an existing building called AUX. Well, in my mind, you know, between that and Northland, that's $3 million out of only 43 million. So it's a pretty good chunk out of a one-time, small amount of money, just dishing it out to two groups that are supposedly non-for-profit, but they're both going to be profiting from that money, the city's only ARPA money, and we shouldn't be doing that. Also object to $4.25 million being used to support the general fund operations, where maybe you can argue that 1.1 million of that was for overtime paid during COVID, if it related to COVID.
15 seconds.
And then 2.45 million for equipment replacement. I assume this is more vehicles. Have we ever purchased an electric vehicle? And are any of these vehicles that are being proposed going to be electric?
Time.
Or just gas generators? Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next speaker will be Betty Coens, followed by Carol Teske, and then Alejandra Ibanez.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Betty Coens. I'm a member of the Evanston Early Childhood Council. The Evanston Early Childhood Council is a cohesive group of over 25 full and part-day centers, as well as family home childcare and home visiting programs. The pandemic has been near catastrophic for the Evanston early childhood community. We are requesting 4% of the ARPA funding in addition to what has already been allocated in buckets for early childhood education, but we are requesting 4% through the council to stabilize the early childhood sector for the following priorities. And this has been emailed to council members as well as Mayor Biss, so more detailed information is in the email to you, but I will speak to the first three priorities. Operational support for full, part-time, and home-based programs. Decreases in enrollment and a loss of fees significantly impacted operational costs. It has become increasingly difficult to meet operational costs. Some centers, especially part-day and home-based programs, are in danger of closing permanently. Affordable childcare is needed in Evanston for families to have the ability to work. The second priority is recouping money spent on capital and structural improvements to help align early childhood facilities with new COVID requirements. Many of our structural repairs have been put on hold to pay for ongoing COVID-related items, such as PPE, sanitation, virtual connections with families, and social distancing materials. All of our programs need help with the higher cost of providing care and education while enrolling fewer children. The third priority is financial support for staff, educational credentialing, training, and career advancement. The income for early childhood education workers without a degree is typically minimum wage. Many of these workers are Black Indigenous people of color, and many of them work a second job to have a livable income. Opportunities for career advancement is dependent upon the worker's ability to pay the tuition. Many cannot afford the cost and are unable to leave their job for required field work. Our Evanston council is diligently working to resolve challenges that we have been experiencing. We need the assistance of the city council to ensure that our economy is stable and that families have safe and affordable care for our youngest children. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you. The next speaker is Carol Teske, followed by Alejandra Ibanez, and then Tina Payton.
Good evening. I'm Carol Teske. I'm the executive director of the Childcare Network of Evanston, but tonight I represent the Evanston Early Childhood Council. As Betty just said, we have a membership of about 25 early childhood providers in Evanston. The Evanston Early Childhood Council is a collective that has been in existence since the early 1980s. It is a formal collaboration built on years of trust and partnership. We have a mission statement, a set of core values. We elect a chair, vice chair, secretary, and my organization, the Childcare Network of Evanston, serves as the fiscal sponsor. Annual dues and donations support our activities, and we'll receive funding through a partnership with the Evanston Cradle to Career to pay an administrator eight hours per week to create systems and assist in a variety of our activities. The Evanston Early Childhood Council's mission is to promote access to high-quality services in the early childhood education and to share resources and best practices. Our council supports families and children and advocates for equity and inclusion for all children in Evanston. Our vision includes empowering parents as partners and advocates so that all children can thrive and be successful while families are supported, honored, and valued. As early childhood professionals, we are committed to our community by creating positive, long-term, meaningful solutions to solve real-life problems caused by the pandemic. I'm here tonight to not only ask you to recognize the early childhood community as a place where ARPA funds could be wisely invested, but to also request that the Evanston Early Childhood Council be the recipient of a portion of the funds. With Childcare Network of Evanston as the fiscal agent for the Early Childhood Council, we have a proven track record of fiscal responsibility to track and monitor federal, state, and municipal funds. CNE, my organization, is a Head Start, early Head Start grantee, is the community-based, state-funded preschool for all grantee for Evanston, and even accepts funding from the city of Evanston. We are poised and ready to take on the responsibility of monitoring and reporting grant funding. Our council is comprised of the providers in our community, and they know firsthand what and where the needs are. We already have strategies and systems in place to build the early childhood system into a stronger network to provide greater support for children and families. So as the city council, you all have a great responsibility and a very unique responsibility to disperse a large amount of funding. Early childhood is listed in several of the buckets that are established for the ARPA funding. On behalf of the Evanston Early Childhood Council, please partner with us as we strive to give our youngest Evanstonians a strong start that they deserve. Thanks so much for listening tonight.
Thank you. Next is Alejandra Ibanez, followed by Tina Payton, and then Carlos Sutton.
Buenas noches. Good evening, city council members, mayor, staff, and fellow community members. Can you hear me well?
Yes.
Great. As Mayor Biss said, my name is Alejandra Ibanez. I'm an Evanston resident residing in the 8th Ward with my spouse and three children that attend District 65 and District 202 schools. I also serve as the chair of the city's Equity and Empowerment Commission, excuse me. And I'm also the inaugural executive director of Illinois Unidos, which is a statewide advocacy organization committed to the equitable response and recovery from COVID-19 for the state's Latinx population. I'm here to share my excitement and support for Evanston's interest in applying to create a welcoming center in our city. If you are not aware, Illinois welcoming centers were launched in 2007. They're comprehensive service centers committed to the integration of immigrants and refugees in Illinois. Our state's innovative model aims to eliminate systemic barriers that immigrants face in accessing state services. Our welcoming centers are actually a model as a state-operated, one-stop-shop human service center designed to help immigrants navigate state services and coordinate those state services with nonprofit community social service agencies. The goal of welcoming centers is to strengthen the overall human service delivery system for immigrants and refugees and build the capacity of those same communities. Some of the main features of welcoming centers is they provide comprehensive and holistic case management and service coordination to immigrants and refugees in a linguistically, culturally appropriate manner. Welcoming centers are familiar with benefits and services provided by state and federal agencies, as well as those provided by social service agencies. You know, welcoming centers efforts to coordinate social services, making them accessible and a trustworthy place for immigrants who may not have trust or awareness in government opportunities and services. The early 2020 census data is showing us that the Latino population, which is made up of a large percentage of immigrants and refugees, is the fastest-growing population in the U.S. In Illinois, and even in our own city of Evanston, our nation's Latinx population has grown 23% since the last census. And Evanston has had a historic Latino population for decades, and in 2020, our population continues to grow.
15 seconds.
I'll share that as a parent of three boys that all went to Dawes, my husband and I volunteered in our multicultural night. And if you were to have visited our school, you would have seen that we had children from all over the globe, many of them immigrants and refugees from Africa, Asia, and the Caribbean. Many of these families, like our Haitian and other Caribbean families, have been in Evanston for decades. But I'll also share the pains of COVID-19. COVID-19 hit communities of color and immigrant communities disproportionately, and unfortunately, that is no different in Evanston. Many of our Latinos and other communities of color really struggled in accessing services that are available to them. Evanston Latinos, a nonprofit organization here in Evanston, filled that void and helped... Evanston Latinos, a nonprofit organization here in Evanston, filled that void and helped a lot of our community members to be able to navigate state and federal services in their moment of need. But I think this is our opportunity as a city to be able to play this role and play it better and stronger. Creating a welcoming center in Evanston could be one way in that we ensure our immigrants of color and our communities of color have access to the services that they deserve and they need to recover from COVID and to really have better, fully-lived lives.
Thank you very much.
That is what we are about here in Evanston, and I really support this concept and look to participate in the implementation of the creation of a welcoming center here in Evanston. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Tina Payton, followed by Carla Sutton and Lindsay Percival.
Hi, good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Good evening, mayor, city manager, city clerk, and city council. You need to put ARPA money aside to help small landlords. Grant money, not telling us to get a loan, or the mini committees that I attend, oh, you're at the wrong place, Tina. Sometime in the future, we'll help you. Well, the future is now, is the present. I've heard this story for many years. Rental property is a business. Most rental properties do not go into business to lose money. We have had no help for landlords who suffered great harm from unpaid rents, damages, evicted tenants during this pandemic. You gave businesses on Main Street and Howard Street loss of income for inconvenience for construction for a couple of months, only for retail and restaurants. Affordable housing appears to be just another agenda item that you visit on occasion. Where will you house the new homeless people in Evanston? The Reserve that was just sold for $65 million on Emerson and Ridge? Maybe 828 Lofts on Noize that was just sold for $17 million? Or maybe E2 or The Link, who paid so they wouldn't have to take affordable units? Or the Albion with small number of units? 1717 Ridge? Or many other luxury housing buildings who will not accept 30% AMI or HUD voucher? Or maybe you can put them in the back room of the retail spaces of the restaurants or stores that you already gave money to? Stop giving money to the same businesses multiple times. I'm asking again that you need to put money aside for this small landlords like myself and others that have been harmed by this pandemic. Black Lives Matter all of the time, not some of the time. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Carla Sutton, followed by Lindsay Percival, and then Dorian Price. Mr. Sutton, are you in the Zoom? If not, we'll move on with Lindsay Percival, followed by Dorian Price, and then Jesse
Thank you. My name is Lindsay Percival. I am the executive director of Learning Bridge Early Education Center here in Evanston. I think all the council members have been sent the list of needs that the Evanston Early Childhood Council feel are necessary for the return of services for our sector. I will try to add to rather than repeat our requests. When the Evanston Early Childhood Council came together to ask for help for the ARPA funds, it was very easy for us to see where we need help. Our enrollment plummeted and expenses to keep us safe rocketed. It was a bumpy ride, but working together, supporting each other, we are stronger and we have a greater understanding of the need of high-quality childcare for the city to return to pre-pandemic times. Our council has worked together for over 40 years, from photo displays in the Chase Bank entrance and school fairs to applying collaboratively and sharing funds from grants. Ms. Cohen has outlined some requests, and I would like to speak to a few more. We need financial support for mental and behavioral health and disability, occupational, and physical therapies. Due to COVID-19 and the added stress and trauma to families, we have seen an increased demand in these services. Many families cannot afford the cost of services, and with many mental health professionals leaving the not-for-profit center to go to private practice, the wait lists are very long. Disability services are very limited through early intervention, and more funds are needed to support our families. We are enrolling children who have not been in childcare before. They have not been separated from their parents, nor have they been in group settings. These children and their families and teachers need supports for these transitions to be successful. We need emergency support for families and scholarship dollars to support the continuity of care. Many parents work two jobs due to COVID. They have lost one of them or have had their hours cut, which makes them underemployed, and they do not work the hours that are needed to be eligible for the Childcare Assistance Program. But they still need care for their part-time hours that they are working. We want to keep the children in secure care while the parents get back on their feet again.
15 seconds.
Lastly, financial support for our staff who have worked daily through the pandemic so parents can go to work. The last 21 months have been a balancing act between staying safe and staying open. COVID is still very much with us until there is a vaccine for young children.
Time.
And I will stop there. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next speaker is Dorian Price, who will be followed by Jesse Rojo, and then Juan Jaraquaris.
Yeah, I mean, if there's space on there.
Is Ms. Price in the Zoom?
I'm sorry, I did not mute fast enough. Thank you.
Go ahead.
I can start?
Yep, please do.
Let me get back to my notes. Okay, I listened to the speakers, and it was wonderful to know so many organizations are committed and that we may be able to help them with regard to ARPA funds that we've yet to assign. And with regard to what Tina said about landlords and what I have to say about having some alternative with regard to helping the landlords and residents who need help even before TIPS are able to be available, our thoughts I have, as we all have listened to Paul, the director of economic development, in a video conference just a few hours ago about a TIP. So basically, I'll read the section that Paul encouraged me to, and that he was going to pass on to others, is that the CEO hasn't committed, I mean, the city of Evanston hasn't committed enough help, and we hear that with regard to the agencies who are basically sinuous to good money spent, right? And residents can be forced to leave early, sell, or lose their homes, or similar to landlords losing their properties through indepth state foreclosure. Can ARPA funds get rehabbed on sooner to keep longtime residents who are waiting for TIPS and acquire renters for needed revenue generation, like the developers for residents, seniors who want to age a place? And then I added to that, listening to the speakers, not just TIPS, but 2+ million for families, kids, PTSD, trauma, more integrative practices, including acupuncture accessibility, where money and place have been issues, or accessible places, which we're talking about, these centers for people. And we need to have that centralized as well as a city. And we need to restore, to do that all, it's a simple solution. Restore, I mean, not simple, but of a complex problem, a single-point solution would be restore the Health and Human Services grant maker for housing and homelessness within Health and Human Services, who then can acquire grant funds, but to synergize and augment the ARPA funds that are being requested right now as you're listening. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Jesse Rojo, who will be followed by Juan Jaraquaris, and then Ali Harnad.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. My name is Jesse Rojo. I'm a policy organizer with Kofi Community Organizing Family Issues, which has a team of about 30 leaders, primarily Latinas in Evanston. And today, I'm going to talk in support of the welcoming center, because I believe that it takes a village to raise a child, but unfortunately, because of COVID and because of the economic issues that existed before COVID, not every family can do it by themselves. Again, it takes a village, but not every family has access to that village. Not every family has access to that support. I believe that the welcoming center can help be that support that so many families, especially immigrant families, need. And that's why, that's really the only reason I'm here, to just speak in support of this. And in support of the idea that this welcoming center would not just help Evanston open its doors to immigrant communities, but also kind of step outside of its doors and recognize that immigrants not only need support to be here, but that they can also offer a lot of fantastic things for the city of Evanston. Yeah, that's really all I got. Real quick shout out to all the early childhood folks, too. I'm also an early learning policy organizer, and I believe 100% that investing in early childhood education is essential for helping people step out of poverty. Thank you very much, everybody. Have yourself a blessed night.
Thank you. The next speaker is Juan Jaraquaris, followed by Ali Harnad, and then Angela McConner. Is Juan there? Looks like he's not in the Zoom at this time, so we'll move on with Ali Harnad, followed by Angela McConner.
Ooh, I can unmute. Hello. Good evening, honorable everybody. You can hear me?
Yes.
I have a few points. I didn't write an eloquent speech tonight, but I just wanted to reiterate some things that were brought up on the November 1st city council meeting by members of the Mental Health Task Force, where we were encouraging an increase in the allocation of ARPA funds for social services. I want to give an A+ on the agenda for the idea of a living room, and I'm really looking forward to visiting some living rooms with members of the Mental Health Task Force and some council members who have responded to our emails to request meetings. And if anybody else would like to meet with members of the Mental Health Task Force, we are definitely very interested in meeting with members of the council to discuss this ARPA funding. And also want to give an A+ to the Latinx welcoming center idea. I think that is an incredible idea, and I was really excited to see that in the packet. If we are truly a welcoming city that we profess to be, here's like a literal way to put our money where our mouths are. And as always, I'd like to encourage partnership with District 65 and District 202 in that process, because I think that that would be an important element to a welcoming center to make sure that families are looped right into the schools and welcomed within the community and the schools as well. Shout out to all the people advocating for spending for childcare. That is an essential element for families' lives to be able to succeed in Evanston. So A+ on all those. Also want to say that Community Alliance for Better Government had a press conference this evening to say that we would really hope that the city council or the city manager search will be as transparent as possible and are eagerly awaiting updates on that and updates on how the public will be involved in the next steps going forward. And then just an observation suggestion from something I saw today on the city website, helping families try to get enrolled in the holiday program, the mayor's holiday gift program. There's a page of information that has a lot of information about how to donate and where to donate and how to give stuff, and then a tiny little paragraph at the bottom of how to participate in it. And there are lots of families who want to participate and are looking for that information. So if that could be made more accessible and visible to families, I think that would be important. And that's my list for today, so I yield my time to previous speakers who talked too long because they were saying really important stuff. So thank you very much.
Thank you. The next speaker will be Angela McConner. After him, we'll loop back to those who already called on. I think you're muted right now.
Hello?
Yep, there you go.
All right. I want to give an A+ to this great idea of opening a welcome center and support the Hispanic/Latinx community in Evanston. I think that this is a gap in services in our community and signs we need to consider that our population is growing very fast, and we have the opportunity, we are creating a group of Latinx businesses, leadership in Evanston with the support of the Evanston Chamber and the city clerk of Evanston, the city of Evanston. And we detect, we realize, for the feedback of the people, that the Latinx community, especially business, do not have enough support or enough resources. So I think that this is a great opportunity to support our community, to grow their business and to bring more revenue to the city of Evanston. So an A+ for the project idea. That's it. That's all.
Thank you.
All right.
So now, our next speaker will be Carla Sutton, followed by Juan Jaraquaris.
Thank you, Mayor Bis. I want to just reinforce some of the comments made by Tina Payton and add a couple more. I think this is a chance for us to use this ARPA plan, not only for mental health, but for small minority landlords who have provided housing for difficult-to-place people looking for places to stay. This COVID virus has put us in a very difficult position, not only for the lost income, but also at the point where we cannot provide the services of providing housing if we can't get some support for ourselves. That's why I recommended and suggested that you set aside $1 million to $2 million for small minority landowners who have had a substantial hit in their income for paying their property taxes, maintaining them, and there was no other resources, not through connections, not through community block grant funds. There were no programs that we could take advantage in our situation. So I'm hoping that you could have some money to set aside and give us the opportunity to continue providing housing for people here in Evanston. Thank you.
Thank you. The final speaker will be Juan Jaraquaris. Can you unmute your phone? We're unable to hear you. I think your telephone is muted. Oh, maybe dial * six?
Sorry.
Oh, there you go.
Sorry, everyone. Hi, my name is Juan Jaraquaris. I'm an Evanston resident in the 9th Ward. I'm an immigrant and a board member of Evanston Latinos, and I just wanted to speak tonight to support my support for the Welcome Center. In the past few years, when I've worked with the community and with my organization, Evanston Latinos, a theme when we talk to residents that comes up time and time again is a need for a gathering place for the Latino community and also, you know, help accessing services. help accessing services, especially services in Spanish. And I think a welcome center would be something that would benefit the Latinx community as well as other immigrant communities. And I think it's the right step for the city of Evanston to take. And I just wanted to voice my full support. Thank you.
Thank you. That brings our public comment to a close, which brings us to special orders of business. Would anyone like to make a motion to enable discussion on item SP1?
Mr. Mayor, members of City Council, I'd like to move the continued discussion of ARPA funds and potential allocation. This is for discussion.
I will second.
Councilmember Braithwaite moves item SP1. Councilmember Newsma seconds. There's going to be a brief presentation from staff that goes over some of the high points and related topics to what was in the packet that was published late last week, just as a bit of a guide for discussion. I think this is something like 11 slides long, but we're going to stop at the end of each section, each section being typically one or two or three slides, so that the discussion can be focused on particular issues and not sort of jump around from topic to topic. So with that, let me turn it over to our team. Thanks so much for the work you put into this.
Good evening, members of City Council. And Clerk Mendoza, Kelly Ganderzki, again, term city manager. I want to acknowledge tonight's ARPA team. We have with us Paul Zalmazak, our Economic Development Division Manager. We have Sarah Flax, our Housing and Grants Manager. And I'm proud to announce, we also have with us Nathan Norman, who has just been named our Workforce Development Coordinator. So this team will be kicking off tonight's meeting. We did something a little different tonight. Paul, can you go to the next slide? Or Anderson? Thank you. This, we put together, we've been getting a lot of questions about the funds and how they work and when are they coming in. And we think that this graphic is going to be really helpful to not only members of the council, but members of the public as well, kind of showing a timeline of fund disbursement, when funds should really be encumbered or assigned, and then expended. So as you can see, we've got some time on this timeline, and we've been plugging right along since July of this past year. But this is also, if you can go to the next page, Paul, our new ARPA webpage has been updated with this information for the public. My goal is to get this information along with some other pertinent ARPA resources in a downloadable form and PDF on this website in Spanish and English, so that we can have that, members of the public can download and print if they want to, or people can look at it as a flyer. But on the website, it's been updated with what we've discussed so far, where we've been, where we are, timeline and resources. What's not on here, which will also be implemented soon, is another question that we've been asked. I'm a community member, or I'm a non-for-profit organization, and I want to pitch my idea for ARPA. I want to pitch a suggestion. How do I do that? Well, now that the council has approved ARPA funds for Sarah Flax's group, we will be directing those requests through Sarah Flax and her group when a staff member has been assigned. And there will be an email address assigned to that. So the website will continue to be updated and we'll continue to let council know when that's all happening. So the public will be able to access that information and access a staff member to kind of coordinate through this process. I want to stop there, make sure nobody has any questions. Oh, okay. I'm going to turn it over to Paul to talk about economic development and where we are and where we are going.
Hold on one second. Councilmember Fleming.
I'm sorry, Kelly, I did have a question. So that, the page about where you can go in there, pitch your idea, are we going to, and I can't see that far, sorry. Are we going to have parameters in terms of like, these are the kind of things that will be considered? And, or if this, okay, so can you explain that part, too?
Yeah, we'll have resource information, talking about the guidelines and what we can and can't do with ARPA funds. But if, you know, if there is a pitch or a question, Sarah's group will be able to help the community member vet that out as well.
Sarah, not in her-
Councilmember Newsma.
Sarah, not in her affordable housing or social services capacity, but in her ARPA queen capacity.
That is correct.
Got it. I just gave you a promotion, maybe. No raise, sorry, but queen of ARPA. I'm pleased that we're making some progress here. You know, these are steps in the right direction in alignment with the documentation that I had circulated and discussed with most of the people up here on the dais. So I still think we were not quite there, but we were, with this work and where the direction we're heading, we're taking some, you know, good strides in terms of transparency. One thing I would like to see on this, on the web portal here, is our allocations, what we have assigned to each bucket and how, a running total of how much of each bucket has been spent. It'd be nice to see all that in one place as well. But thank you for the work. I appreciate it.
Councilmember Burns.
Yeah, I just want to clarify, we haven't determined that anything is going to Social Services Committee or this yet. I know it's been recommended, but I don't remember taking any official action on that. So I just want to be clear here. Is that, we're on the same page? Okay.
Paul, I think we're ready for you.
Thank you. Good evening, members of the City Council and Clerk Mendoza. For those in attendance and watching, my name is Paul Zalmazak, and I serve as the city's Economic Development Manager. So I have two slides that I'll briefly go through, and then we'll pause, as the mayor had mentioned, for questions or comments. This was something like a 25-page memo. We appreciate your patience, as we wanted to really document our thoughts from a staff perspective. And we often do that with, you know, I'll do this again with the Economic Development Committee as we come up with a work plan for 2022 through 24. Not necessarily expecting you to read every word, but we do want it to be very comprehensive and will provide kind of an executive summary brief covering it. But for the economic development, from the economic development perspective for ARPA, we really want to recommend that we move forward with kind of a, what I'll call a slow roll or kind of an interim process, where we are moving forward with the retail plan, which we're actually trying to be a little more comprehensive with our terminology. So using, calling it a Business District Strategy and Implementation Plan, that has gone to committee. We're just waiting for the City Council to buy into the economic development portion of the ARPA spending plan or investment plan. And if at some point we're ready to move forward with that study, we'll do that, we'll issue an RFP. Again, we are recommending, really for downtown primarily, but also I would recommend for Main Street, a Business District Maintenance and Ambassador Program. I have described that in the memo. If there are questions, I'll answer them. Identify opportunities, improve the streetscape. This is the idea of Orington, removing some of the landscape berms, but perhaps there are many other opportunities. Part of the Business District Strategy and Implementation Plan would include that. There are some things that staff have recognized immediately, and that's why we brought forward the other idea that I believe was approved by council as kind of a placeholder at a previous meeting through APW. And that was a $450,000 hold that would match a $1.8 million grant from the state of Illinois. And finally, create and implement a citywide placemaking plan that goes back to some early conversations we had with the Economic Development Committee over the summer. And on each of these slides, you'll see a star at the bottom with our recommendation that the process would follow our existing process. I think we heard Councilmember Braithwaite mention that we have a process. Let's follow it. So from the economic development perspective, we'll go to the Economic Development Committee. And there are a couple of things here with placemaking. And I think some of the things like outdoor dining or things that involve the public right of way, we need APW and Planning and Development Committee. And just for the sake, for the record, I am putting these two items on that represent direct assistance. There's been some debate about how we're going to process these, but I'm just putting them out there because they have been requested. The Economic Development Committee tabled the requests from the OX to the January 26 meeting as we await for the City Council to provide guidance on how we're going to plan for ARPA spending. And then Northlight still is considering asking for $2 million for their $25 million project. There has not been a formal request of this body. So I'll pause here unless we want to have Nathan present workforce, and then we'll comprehensively discuss economic development. So Nathan, why don't you take the stage? Thank you.
So I just want to add that Nathan began his official position today. So I'm happy to say this is a budgeted position, too. So his position is not ARPA contingent. And it was sorely needed. It's a big hole. It was a big hole we had in our organization that Nathan's going to fill. And he came hitting the ground running even last week with, you know, Kelly, I've got some ideas. I've had some ideas. I've been doing my research. I've been working on this. So I'm going to let Nathan take it away.
Absolutely. Thank you so much, Interim Manager Grankowski. And good evening, City Council, and Honorable Mayor Biz and Clerk Mendoza. Again, for those watching, I'm Nathan Norman, and I'm the newly appointed Workforce Development Coordinator. And right here on this slide, we have some other priorities, I call them, some of the initial priorities that we will focus on for our workforce development efforts. And one of the things I want to establish first is to coordinate with both internal and external employer partners. And that is really just to establish a base for what we would like to, with employment pathways we can identify to get Evanston residents involved in. Thank you so much. And then next, I would like to identify industry priorities with employer partners. So I know one of the things that I've heard over and over tonight is about childcare and the demand for workers in childcare in those spaces, and then also the demand for individuals to get back in the workspace and how, you know, childcare can be a barrier for that if they can't afford it or if, you know, they don't have the capacity in some of the childcare spaces. Wraparound support is going to be crucial. It's going to be critical for individuals. And what I mean by that is, we want to provide job search assistance. We want to provide workplace comportment preparation skills. We want to provide digital literacy courses for individuals seeking employment opportunities. And one of the things I want to do, too, is identify the barriers that, barriers to employment for these individuals. And again, this may be because of, you know, they don't have childcare. This may be because we see a lot of people at home saying, you know, the benefits I'm receiving with, from unemployment, you know, it's just not conducive for me to go back to work. It doesn't compete. So we want to make sure that we're able to identify competitive opportunities to get Evanstonians back in the workforce. And I think that that's going to be integral. And one of the things, too, is just increasing the visibility of Evanston, of the city of Evanston's workforce development initiatives. The more people know about our efforts and what we're doing to attract Evanston residents to the workforce, the more I think we'll get buy-in from residents. And so this is, again, this is my first day today in this road. But I assure you, we're going to do everything that we can to make a conducive effort to get Evanstonians back into the workplace and to get our workforce development initiatives thriving for the city of Evanston. And so just really quick, if anyone has, you know, any questions or anything like that, bear with me. I apologize, my first time before a city council, so a little nervous. But happy to be here with you all. And I intend to amplify our workforce development efforts.
Welcome, Mr. Norman. We're happy you're here.
Welcome.
So this is now a time for discussion on the array of workforce development items raised so far. We'll start with Councilmember Reed.
Well, yeah, I just wanted to say congratulations, Nathan, on the new position. Great first time presenting in front of the council. Paul, thank you for your presentation as well. So one, a public comment that was made earlier. I want to say that placemaking is, I think, one of the best economic development investments that we can make. I am personally more supportive of investing in public spaces than investing in private businesses for the most part. And so I think placemaking is exactly that, investing in public spaces and making our public spaces better for everyone, which in turn, it has an economic benefit to the private businesses, but ultimately, it's for the public. So fully supportive of this. I also, I heard you say that we would seek services of a Business District Maintenance and Ambassador Program for downtown and Main Street. I'm really interested in why, you know, maybe Howard Street wasn't included in that.
Sure. I wasn't sure if you were finished with your questions.
I know, I kind of left it.
Yeah, I guess, I guess Main Street was top of mind based on some challenges we had over the last week or so with, you know, Christmas tree lights and things like that. So I would say that Howard Street, the way I imagine this rolling out is downtown would have the, would be the primary service area served by this ambassador group. And then we'd have the ambassador also kind of rotating where needed. So I think my observation, based on this experience and also living here, is Main Street seems to be kind of a hotspot right now. And we could rotate it to Howard Street, too. This is really, it's about designing a scope of services for this program. But primarily, I'm thinking of downtown as kind of the center of the activity. But sure, Howard Street. I wouldn't suggest we use it on Central Street. And we just don't have the need there. I can't think of any other district. Dempster, I don't think needs it either.
My thinking behind that is, you know, downtown and Central Street and Main Dempster, or even Main Dempster have SSAs. And so they have, what, $150,000, $250,000 roughly annually allocated toward their needs. And, you know, you have business districts like Howard Street. I'm not the 5th Ward Councilmember, but, you know, the 5th Ward has a business district. And other wards have business districts as well that don't have those SSAs and thereby, and those business districts get about $10,000 a year. And I think Howard Street and other districts, I'm the 5th Ward also. So Howard Street really could use some of this love and attention as well.
Okay. Thanks for the feedback. And for the record, I believe at a future meeting, we will be recommending that we provide more money from the Great Merchant Grant for the business districts that don't have SSAs, since less is going to the SSAs. We have more in our budget. So we're thinking of maybe recommending a double or maybe one and a half times, so like somewhere in the range of $25,000. But that's for later Economic Development Committee.
Let's get that triple, quadrupled, so it's, you know, so we can create some equity. Thank you.
At this time, no one who has not spoken yet is requesting to speak. So we'll go back to Councilmember Fleming, followed by Newsma.
All right, thank you. Excuse me. So Paul, I got to add a couple of questions. So the Hill SIBA Economic Development, or excuse me, Hill SIBA Business District is not under the other business districts as I think an inclusive and equitable development. Is there a particular reasoning for that?
Okay, I'm sorry. Can you tell me what you're referencing?
Yeah, in a second. So it's listed, let's see.
What page of your document?
I'm getting there. So you have, on page two, you have Business District Improvement. But then on page three, under equitable and inclusive, I mean, excuse me, inclusive and equitable recovery, you have the Hill SIBA Business District. So I was just trying to figure out why it wasn't with other business districts.
Got you. This was our way to illustrate that the, the Section 9 in our table, the inclusive and equitable recovery portion of it of the ARPA is area-specific. So it's in, and Census Track 8092 is Hill Arts and also Central Evanston Business Association or SIBA. So we are highlighting the fact that ARPA allows various, you can use area-focused economic development activities with minimal kinds of strings attached from the federal government. That's why it's showing up there. We could use Section 9, that $4 million from that to support those business district activities.
Okay.
The other districts, you couldn't, because, okay.
That's good. The other thing, you already meant to answer one of my questions. So you and I had a discussion about this early on, about the Maintenance Ambassador Program and how I do not support them. You know, I, I'm not downtown all the time, but when I'm there, I don't see like a huge trash situation. I see a lot of people out there. But my concern, as I mentioned to you, is we're going to get the Ambassador Program, and we're going to start to kind of shoo the homeless away, so to speak. Also, I have concerns with the stigma that might come along with this, given that the Ambassador Program, as Mitchell stated, was kind of helping, you know, hard-to-employ folks kind of start working. And so my concern with that is we're going to have a lot of people of color out with test on or whatever. We're tagging them with, so I just want to make that my public concern still. Not so much a question. I guess you'll handle that when it comes- I guess you'll handle that when it comes forward. And then I guess, as you put those two businesses up in terms of the OX and Northlight, and I know you preference that these are the ones that asked, I would hope, and I guess economic development is doing some of this, like there's some kind of criteria that we're going to use to determine who and what and why and all that. So I look forward to getting that when it comes back.
Right. I'm not sure what, this evening, I do have a slide that shows kind of a draft, like a rubric or a scoring mechanism or matrix that we could use to kind of evaluate programs. We'll come back to it later.
Yeah, so what we did, and I'll just briefly touch on it now. We took the Evanston Community Foundation report along with some other public feedback that we've gotten from the community. And we created a kind of a criterion sheet that we think that boards, commissions, committees, and our staff should use in scoring or evaluating these proposals. And you'll know that they have these cross-sector references as well that the Evanston Community Foundation reported on. So this is just a list, but the actual chart would show how many cross sectors do these proposals touch. And the council will be able to see how many quote boxes each proposal checks in terms of these, I'll call them, values.
Okay, so that's helpful. Thank you. And then just my last comment is for Mr. Norman. So I think you have it on here, but I would love for us to increase our workforce opportunities in this building. I know several years ago, we changed the policy about hiring people who had criminal backgrounds. And I don't know, since then, we've hired a single person. So I trust you will be working on that. And just my other public comment is, congrats on the job. However, I will say, as a citizen who has known Norman for a long time, it is a huge loss that he is no longer in our outreach team. I mean, his work in the community with people who we need to have moved out of certain lifestyles is humongous. And people probably don't know it because they don't see him. But I think he'll do great here. But I think, you know, this is a huge loss to not have him really running or serving in our outreach space, because he is a gem in that way.
Thank you so much. I appreciate that, Councilmember Fleming. Regarding your first question, we will be doing some, I will be coordinating with both internal and external partners. But we want to definitely do what you've just spoken about. And so we want to create apprenticeship programs within the City of Evanston, for sure. So like, we have something in the Water Department already. We want to augment that. I've spoken with several department heads already. And we're going to figure out ways to get Evanston residents in this building so that they can be prepared for the workforce. We want to do things in public works. We want to do things in facilities. We want to do things in IT. And we want to be a leader about what we're asking and expecting external partners to do. And so we've identified a lot of those opportunities, and we're going to execute on them. So that will be forthcoming.
Well, thank you. And then if we could just make sure, because last time we had those water internships or apprenticeships, the pay was low and there was no benefit, so we couldn't find people. So hopefully, that's something we can look at increasing the cost of.
Absolutely. I will be meeting with Ms. Flax to discuss that. Yes, absolutely. Thank you so much.
Mr. Merrick, can I say one last thing in response to Alderman, or sorry, Councilmember Fleming's comment about the Ambassador Program?
Sure.
Okay, I just want to be very clear that you and I have spoken, and definitely your concerns have registered. And before we recommend any program, I want to make sure that it links with yours and not duplicates it. So it's probably much different than what you're planning. But before we recommend any expenditures or an RFP for that service, I want to work with you directly so we're not duplicating the service, if that makes sense.
Yeah, and I'm a little less worried about duplication. But yeah, we can talk about that with Alderman, Revelle, and I.
Councilmember Revelle.
Well, I was just going to echo some of the concerns that Councilmember Fleming raised about the Ambassador Program. I mean, I'd like to know how it's going to be relating to the crisis response teams that are going to be, from Trilogy, for example, that's going to be working in Evanston. I want to make sure that we're not at cross purposes with that program. So I certainly will be looking for more information about that program.
Okay.
Is there any more questions for Mr. Zama?
Yeah, there are. So next is Councilmember Nusma.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So just point of order here. Are we going to be talking about funding levels as we have this conversation, point by point? Or are we just looking for qualitative feedback at this point?
So I would say that based on the discussions we've had in public and the feedback that's occurred, I think it's safe to say that we've kind of settled on the categories that we talked about last time. I think it would be useful, in addition to qualitative feedback, to talk about, for instance, you know, the economic development category was $7 million. But it seems, based on this presentation, that the proposals for that to encompass business district improvements as well as workforce development, as well as direct assistance and requests for funding. I think some guidance regarding how to parcel out that $7 million amongst those different priorities would be valuable.
Got it, got it. So before I get into economic development issues, I'll just make one last hail mary for a separate bucket for climate action and environmental justice. I really think we can demonstrate a commitment to the CARP plan that a previous council has endorsed unanimously. I think climate action, environmental justice are going to be the issues of the 21st century. And we have an opportunity now to demonstrate the commitment that we all say we have to these issues by taking a significant chunk of ARPA money and designating that very clearly for those issues. So I will move on now to talk about economic development, picking up on the concept of the Ambassador Program. I support that, you know, as long as it meshes nicely with the other programs that we have going on. It's not meant to replace it. It should be complementary. I think the issue here is that downtown is not what it should be. It's not what we need it to be if we want to make the most of downtown Evanston as an economic driver for the entire city. I have heard feedback from many constituents who are experiencing problems on a day-to-day basis with, you know, less than acceptable conditions, less than acceptable interactions. And considering that, we do have, you know, we do a really good job in Evanston of supporting homeless populations and disadvantaged populations. A lot of that happens very close by to downtown. So we need to be aware of, you know, the side effect of the good work we're doing and make sure that we maintain downtown as a welcoming destination to drive economic activity. So I support an Ambassador Program that works well to support those ends. If we're looking for qualitative feedback, I support both the OX and Northlight. I support Northlight. I will advocate for the full $2 million for Northlight Theater. You know, I think they can very clearly demonstrate long-term financial benefit, not only for downtown, but all of Evanston. So in terms of a financial return on investment of ARPA money, whatever we put into Northlight would be money very well spent, you know. In addition to the economic arguments, developing Evanston as a center for culture and arts and entertainment, you know, Northlight is a perfect partner in this endeavor. And the more support they get from the city, the quicker we can get them here. And we're going to have a tough time coming around the bend out of our COVID economy. So Northlight can be, you know, one of the engines that drives that train. As far as process, we're making some good strides here in defining that process. I would like to talk about a timeline. And, you know, I support what Councilmember Fleming said about, you know, making sure that the application process is open to other potential applicants. And that means we should probably define a timeline or deadline by which, you know, applications should be received. And maybe there are two deadlines. This is, you know, not necessarily a short-term, like meaning within the next few months program. But, you know, certainly within the next few years, we have to spend this money. We don't need to spend it all at once, though. We could hold off six months, 12 months, and hold off some money for projects that may come later.
Just a quick heads-up, Councilmember, your time's up. I'll let you wrap up.
Perfect timing, because I was at the end of my list.
Great. Councilmember Burns.
I just want to pick up on that we don't have to spend it all right now. I would love for us, as a council, to, especially in this meeting, start to identify some priorities and see where there's consensus for those priorities, even before we go out to the community and have them submit applications. Because my concern is, like, we know as a council action that we need to take, for instance, childcare. If we all agree up here that we want to spend, that childcare, providing childcare as a priority of this body, then we could spend a session just unpacking, like, what are the different opportunities that we can explore just for childcare, right? Get some consensus there, get some support for it. And then through an RFP process, once we understand what we're looking for, then kick it to the community to say, hey, you know, this is what we're looking for in typical RFP fashion, and see if people can develop a proposal that fits what we're looking for. Same thing for economic development. For me personally, I would love to see things that are going to directly lead to job creation. So I talk a lot about the lead pipe replacement program because, in the way that I've discussed it, I think we have support for it. Because we would be quarterbacking it, it would directly lead to job creation. Wouldn't be no if, ands, buts about it. And I know through Nathan, congratulations, there are some other, many other ideas that we can come up with that will lead directly to job creation. And so those are the type of conversations I would love for this body to have. Let's come out of this meeting putting some points on the board in some way and not just leaving staff with not enough direction to go off of. Let's say definitively today, you know what? We want to explore childcare. We want to explore economic development opportunities that will lead to job creation. We want to explore, we know for sure, we want to advance access to mental health care. Let's learn about living rooms and other models. You know, because the issue is that if we don't set our priorities, we don't even know how much that's going to cost. And so we don't know what we'll have left. So if we just say, yeah, we're going to spend money on all of this stuff, like, I don't think that's the best way to do it. Let's figure out like what we for sure want to have in the City of Evanston and then work our way from there. Figure out how much that's going to cost and see how much we have left. On that same note, participatory budgeting, I would love to leave this meeting today with unanimous support to start that process. That is low-hanging fruit. Again, it's a process that's not going to involve this body. Can we please say yes today? I'm more than happy to sit on that committee or whatever the process will be. But please, let's start that process. That's all I have. Thank you.
Councilmember Reed.
Thank you. Starting there where you left off, I will also echo the desire to get started with the participatory budgeting process. I think that process will take quite a long time. And so I think we should get it started now. It'll be a community-driven process. But I do think, similar to the way that we're creating the redistricting committee earlier, or that we created the redistricting committee, it'll be a guiding committee for what the public process will look like. So I made the referral on this a while ago, and I'm happy to serve on that committee as well. Also, oh, Councilmember Nusma, I don't know if that was a hail mary or a hail motion, but I'd certainly be willing to support that if it were. I'd be willing to make the motion myself to create that separate fund for our CARP goals. I think that is necessary. And so I'll move that. I mean, I think what I heard Mayor Bis say earlier is that it seems as though we have locked in on the buckets, which I don't really, well, not that I, I know we haven't taken an official, from my recollection, we haven't taken an official action on locking in those buckets. And so I'd love for us to do that, take an official council action at some point to really lock in those buckets, if that's the way that we're going to do this. And certainly, I would also echo seeing that 1 point, at least 1.5 million that Councilmember Nusma is recommending for CARP. Secondly, or whatever, third, I guess, are our neighbors to the south that border my ward, Chicago, is a part of their budgeting process. And ARPA expenditures have made a historic investment in affordable housing with their money. And I think I would also highly support that. I think the increase in violence in not only our community but across the nation, I think the, you know, we're hearing about what appears to be an increase in carjackings and all kinds of, you know, crimes of those sort. And I think there's a direct correlation, not even correlation, there's a direct, I would posit, there's a direct connection between the economic turmoil that we've experienced over the last roughly two years with COVID and this increase in crime. And so I think we really need to really buckle down and get into the, get this money flowing to the folks who really need it most and start moving toward, whether it's affordable housing or other, childcare, I think, is a huge one. I think these things will really make a difference in our community, and we can see an immediate impact. So I'll be advocating for those things as well. Thank you.
I'll second that motion.
All right, I'll make that, it's a motion then, to create the ARPA fund.
So I want to first just express a certain amount of discomfort, given the amount of public justified and, in fact, desired public scrutiny on this ARPA topic with the notion of taking votes and binding action on a night that the item's on the agenda for discussion. That's just my own opinion. I recognize the motion's still in order, but I would just caution us to promise that we're having a discussion and then start taking binding votes. But if you want to go ahead, can you, is the motion to adjust the buckets by creating a new bucket for CARP and environmental justice, that would be $1.5 million? And if so, what bucket or buckets does that come from?
Yeah, Councilmember Nusma, I think already laid some of this out, but I think part of it would come from the revenue, where we would recoup some of the lost revenue. I mean, Councilmember Nusma, this is, I'm just...
The numbers in front of us are changed from where I had originally, the buckets that I was originally looking at. So we'd have to take a few minutes to do that work.
Yeah, and if I can say, I, you know, I do realize that this is for discussion. And I think as your comments seem to acknowledge, it's certainly not an Open Meetings Act issue to do this. But I do think, you know, we've had a lot of discussion on ARPA, and I think we haven't really had ARPA ever up for action. And I think we have to start actually making some official moves on this. Because the clock keeps ticking.
As I indicated, the motion's in order. I'm not personally comfortable with, I think we write for discussion on our agendas, not as an Open Meetings Act compliance, but as an act of good faith to the community. And I'm a little concerned about what this would mean in light of that. But again, the motion's certainly in order, and if someone wants to make a motion...
I'll counter that by saying, as an act of good faith for the community, I think it's very important that we invest in climate action and environmental justice. But I understand where the mayor's coming from. I'd be comfortable with the straw poll at this point and just providing some guidance to staff.
To me, there wouldn't be much of a difference. I think we should just start making official actions on this stuff. But I hear your concern, Mayor Bis. But this is locking in a framework. This isn't, you know, we're not saying that we're going to spend $1 million tonight. I think that would be an issue, you know, violating maybe public trust, but just setting up the system.
I'm sorry, I was, can you repeat that, Councilmember?
Councilmember Fleming just asked, when is the vote for, when are we voting on making ARPA allocations? Or setting the buckets and setting the framework and...
Well, I mean, so I thought there was a high degree of clarity last time that we were... we were not going to vote on the buckets, that we were going to allow for input. There was, you know, a call put out to all members of council shortly after the last meeting, asking for a request to change the buckets. There were a few responses that I got, including one from Councilmember Nusma. Candidly, no two of the responses overlapped in any way at all, which I took as an indication that there was not a critical mass that wanted to change things in a particular way. I think there's, I think there's a benefit in laying the buckets, as we keep calling them, out with clarity and transparency and accounting against them, but not tying our hands, and so enabling a future change and the fluidity that would come with that. If folks prefer to adopt that by resolution, that's, that's fine too. But I, I thought we were very clear last time in stating our plan was not to take a vote on the buckets, but simply to agree by, by essential, essentially by consensus or by, by a lack of recommendations to make changes to move forward with those buckets. And I, my understanding is that's where we were as of several weeks ago already.
Yeah, and I'll, I'll just say that I, I hear that. I think that, you know, taking the action formally here, I mean, I, I support Councilmember Nusma's proposal for the ARPA bucket. I think if we were to vote or do some kind of official action here, there would be support for it. And so the fact that that didn't make it into the proposal this time, even though we went through that other process, I think is evidence that we need to do things here officially, take votes. So it's clear, it's crystal clear what our direction is.
I just want to, for what it's worth, add my two sons, which may or may not be helpful, but I hope that it is. In some ways, this is not like the budget, where we need to have something solidified, buckets, solidified numbers, absolute, because we still have the possibility, although I hope and pray that it doesn't happen, that we have horrible revenue loss next year or the year after, and we have to totally reallocate. And so if we take action on the buckets and vote, lock ourselves in, then we leave ourselves with less fluidity. I will say, I understand Councilmember Nusma's concern on the, on the CARP bucket. I think staff did a nice job implementing the CARP ideals into affordable housing and equitable recovery. I think it's, it's on the forefront of our minds, and it's also going into the strategic and comprehensive plan, so it's, it's going to be in all things that we do. I understand the need and the desire for it. I just would, as a staff, from a staff perspective, would caution the council in tying your hands at this moment in time.
If I can wrap up, I, I would say that I, I appreciate that thought. I, I don't think we'd be tying our hands in that we are the council, and we can change our mind at any point, and, you know, with a resolution and with a simple, you know, another vote to change what we want to do, we can certainly change any allocations. I think it just makes it official, it makes it more transparent, it puts it out to the community, hey, these are our solid intentions, and if we are going to vary from these intentions, you know, there will be some kind of formal action to demonstrate to you that we are deciding to change our course of action. So that's my final thought on that. Thank you.
Councilmember Burns?
You know, I'm not sure all CARP actions that we would want to take are even eligible for ARPA funds, and so to me, this goes right back to what I was saying about priorities. I think if we establish climate action and resiliency as a, as a, as a priority, then we can work with staff to clearly define what we want to do and how much, going back to how much it costs, and we can better determine how we want to, what existing buckets we want to reallocate funds in order to support that work. Again, and I'm, I'm ready to make, you know, motions on priorities. I, I think we're ready. We've, we've talked about this a lot, and I know even just from looking at the work from our social services committee, that mental, expanding access to mental health care is a priority, and I'm, I'm just ready to make, you know, definitely ready to make some motions so that we can give staff some direction to come back and say, hey, here are some of the things that we can do to expand access to mental health care. We've talked about a lot of it already at the social services committee. I think we're ready to start to establish priorities. One could be, again, climate action and resiliency as a priority.
Mr. Mayor, I wanted to point out that we have approximately five slides left that address some of the concerns that have been brought up in this dialogue, and also incorporating some of the climate action resilience planning conversation, and I don't know if we want to continue that.
Yeah, let's, let's not, you make a good point, that any, any action we might want to take should, the category that's been discussed recently should follow the whole presentation. So let me go back to you with a question of my own. I think what we saw today is a really important step in the right direction. I guess what I additionally would want to see is clarity about goals. So for instance, when there was talk about, like, a matrix and figuring out which boxes are being checked, like, that sort of gave me a heart attack, because it seems to me that the goal shouldn't be to pick the programs that check as many boxes as possible, the goal should be to pick the programs that move the ball down the field as far as possible. And, you know, I think when it comes to workforce development, it's probably not a great mystery, as Councilmember Burns indicates, the number of jobs for Evanston residents that are a direct result of the program is, is a natural metric. But when it comes to things like business district improvements and, and other, other things that have been discussed already, I think we need to understand the, the metrics that will be utilized to evaluate different potential expenditures. And so I was wondering if you can say a word about the thinking on that subject.
Sure. If I can go back to, so I don't know if I should start with the matrix, or if I should be starting with, with, you know, my, my thoughts on why I would prioritize business district improvements, or any of the four, four items I placed up here. But very specifically, the, the reason I'm so focused as an economic development manager on the, the built environment is because that's the canvas from which our, our business community operates. And right now, we know, based on feedback we've received from small business and also some of the larger businesses, is that we're not looking as good as we possibly could, and that's really kind of impacting either employer, employee engagement, or more importantly, visitors to the community. And we, what, what we've heard a lot, and I hate using this example, but it's, it's, I think, an illustrative one, people really like what they see at that intersection in Womant, that one little village intersection with umbrellas, lights, and people. And the only reason they like it is it's because it's clean, it's green, there's an, there's an active environment, and people want to be there. Really what that is, is place making, and what that is, is business district infrastructure application. So why I'm stressing this from, from an economic development perspective is that I really do believe we're at a transition point. Our, our downtown infrastructure, I'm picking out downtown because I already know we're fixing Main Street, we've got a TIF plan in place, and Howard Street just had a streetscape improvement, but downtown, outside of Fountain Square, has, the last time it went through a revitalization, kind of reinvention phase, was in the late 90s, and it's showing its age. There are more and more people on the streets now. There are more and more people living in downtown Evanston. There's 30,000 people who work here on a daily basis. So there are literally more people, not during the pandemic, but during pre-pandemic times, with the university and our downtown, 2 million square feet of office space, we have roughly 30,000 people who come to work in Evanston daily, within, within a mile of that downtown intersection of Church and Sherman, or half a mile. So the point is, we have to do some things, I believe, to compete with our shopping center competition over at Old Orchard and other communities that have figured this out. They've caught up, so it's our time to, to reinvent. And that's, that's why I'm stressing all these kind of, listen, I'm an economic development manager for the city, and I hate admitting that I'm a planner, but I am, I'm an urban planner, I have that experience, and we use wonky terms like place making. And when you're dealing with $43 million, using the word place making just doesn't feel like it's, there's gravitas to that. But it's really important that we, we make our downtowns. So how would I measure that, Mr. Mayor? I think it's number of new visitors, let's talk about sales tax increases, are our parking garages full? There's a lot of ways that we can, we can track that. But right now, there's, there's some work we need to do. I mean, we need to, the ambassador program would help identify cleaning up of broken uplights that are up, that are sitting in the landscape beds. I'm going to, I'm going to do myself a disservice, I'm supposed to be promoting the community, but I'm highlighting these issues that are challenges. You know, rat nests in these landscape beds, plywood boards attached to, to street signs. So there's, there's a lot that we can do from an urban design standpoint, a place making standpoint, and we can definitely add some for the next round of conversation, or even if we go back to committee with request, we can put something in our rubric that addresses those kinds of things, if that's what you're looking for. And my apologies if I overdid that, or perhaps got a little emotional, so.
Hey, I mean, what better thing to get emotional about than place making? Councilmember Webb?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, on place making, I, I completely agree with Mr. Salmasak. I mean, this is something that there are conferences about, there are books written about it. I've been to...
I'm sorry to interrupt, I just want to be clear. I, me too.
Right, okay, that's right.
My comments are not intended as a criticism at all, they're just intended as a, a call to action to ensure that we're spending what will ultimately still be a limited amount of money on this important topic in the most efficacious way possible.
Right. So, but I did, the reason why I originally put on my light, and it might be that I may have misheard you, Mr. Mayor, because I realize, since we all wear masks, I have realized that I, I'm also a very skilled lip reader, so I realize I don't hear as, as effectively as I once thought I did. So we discussed at economic development what we should, how we should analyze various projects as they come forward, so that we are actually comparing apples to apples, and are they actually meeting, are proposals actually meeting our goals? And so what, what is a fair way to, to look at different proposals as they come in? And what are our values? And how do we make sure our values and the things that are our goals are actually being addressed by the various projects that are coming in? So at the committee meeting, we discussed having some kind of matrix, so that one project could be fairly looked at versus another project, or versus another, or against our own goals, so that it isn't simply, and I've been on the council long enough to see this happen, an emotional plea that gets, that has the most, the best emotional plea that gets money from the council, so, but doesn't necessarily meet the goals that we have or want at a particular time. So, you know, a matrix is not necessarily a, you know, cold document, it's actually here, jobs created, you know, the various aspects Evanston residents served, how does this meet the goals that we have? And that way, so even though you have very different proposals that come in, if they both score well, or if five of them score very well on this, or meet our goals, then we can say, yes, we fairly analyzed these in a way that we could actually compare them, and then justify to the public, we chose this, and this, and this, because they were addressing the goals that we had. So, so I, that, that maybe, I also may have misheard you about the, a rubric or matrix, but I think that's the only way we can move forward and have the public trust us with this and create the transparencies. Like, this is what our goals were, here's how we looked at this program, here's the information we asked them to present to us. Just like with our CDPG money, we asked them, you know, over the, all these grant applicants, you know, you must demonstrate to us improvement, who you served, you know, how you, what new programs you brought in, all of these things that we have done year after year with CDPG money, so that we can look at various programs and say, here's, here are the ones that deserve our money because they meet our goals. Okay. That's all.
Thank you. Did you want to...
No, I, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I took your recommendation as a challenge, and, and we'll, we'll work to make sure that we apply an evaluation process to the softer things, because it is, it's hard. It's hard, and you came, during the summer, it was, it was a real boost to the economic development community to have you come and talk about place making, and we're talking about sitting outside at Fountain Square and things like that. So I know it's important to you, but I do think we had, there is more to this matrix, these came out of the committee, we'll have, we have weights associated with them, but that's it. And I don't know if we should invite Sarah up to, to, yeah. So Sarah, do you want to come up and start your social services slide? Do you want me to...
Real quick, Paul, I just want to say something, Paul. Can you also please try to rank some of, can you also try to rank some of what we saw in terms of things that we have enough information on to act on now, or things that, areas that the economic development department, based on your years of doing this, feel like we need to prioritize? Because as we're evaluating, creating matrices and all this other stuff, like, there's things, we talk about this all the time, like, we, we need to hire, we need to figure out a way to get people jobs. And I feel like while we're determining all that other stuff, we could be having that conversation. We have existing city programming as well as future programming, job training programming, that we have not clearly defined how we're going to train people to do that work and where the funds are going to come from. And I feel like that, those are things that we can act on right now, while we're still trying to better understand what improvements we should make in place making. We talk about it all the time, we just made a wonderful promotion with Nathan. I, I made a referral for local hiring to municipal jobs that I don't think has weight, made his way to committee, so, you know, through working with Paul and Nathan, I, I think we should, we can take action on that. So I would love to see you start to prioritize some of these things that we can work, start working on now.
Thank you. If, if I'm directed by the city council to help prioritize that, I, I will do that. Really briefly, it really depends on, are, are you trying to grow, are you trying to reduce unemployment? Are you trying to grow jobs? Are you trying to grow revenue for the city? Are you focused on reducing carbon? It's probably yes to all those things, so how do you, how do you prioritize? Are you, are you trying to increase the number of visitors? Are you trying to increase the number of workers, or sorry, of, of residents? So I think we could start having the dialogue, but I believe that based on my experience thus far, there is not a consensus on what, how we want to prioritize what's most important. We learned something about social, help me out, Councilmember Nusma, social...
That's ROI, social return on investment.
Right, so, so that's a whole nother layer of ROI that we, we haven't discussed yet. But I do think in, on January 26, we could have a deeper dive conversation, and I, from my perspective as economic development, I can discuss that, but it's not going to, to match up necessarily with what Ms. Flax will talk about.
I mean, even that is a good first step. I'm just saying, instead of, it feels like we're trying to kick this responsibility to organizations in the community when we haven't even done that work yet. So even what you just described, like, that sounds like a really good first step, where we can determine, we can make some of those determinations based on a set criteria about what our goals are, what our priorities are. That's a good first step. Let's not put that off on organizations, let's, let's do that work here. We're elected, I think, to do that work. Staff is prepared and positioned to do that work with us. So however we can get something back that, some type of assignment that we can do as a body to help us then kick something out to the community, that, that's what I believe we should, we should do next.
Councilmember Barthel.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Paul, feel free to, to stay, and I've been listening to the conversation, and I want to take up where Councilmember Nusma left off and, you know, Bobby's call to action. So I said this in the beginning, just using, looking at the economic development, and I'm going to keep that slide up there, because I think it's important to see. And I said this before, like, so three pillars of economic development that we all know and understand is it's business, retention, expansion, and attraction, are the typical traditional areas that we look to fund. And I think for both of, both the aux that we've seen on the slide, as well as Northlight, those are big impact projects that are shelf-ready. They didn't just drop out of the sky. These, both organizations, both non-for-profits have been having these discussions over the past year. And with traditional economic development, and I've said this in the past, it, it depends on what kind of business and where are you using it. And Paul, you've indicated in the last slide, we use tools like CBDG, TIF, economic development buckets, I, I wrote this down, so for example, whether it's facade improvement or whatever, entrepreneurial grant, these are all tools that we have, self-defined, proven track record, so we don't have to recreate the real. So at the end, now that we have this $7 million of economic development funds for ARPA, the ARPA just becomes another funding mechanism. It's not a, a reason for us to recreate something, it's just another budget for us to pull from. to pull from, for large impact projects like the aux, like the, like the Northlight Theater. So if we're looking to take action, if we're looking to take action, then I want to say, at our neck economic development reason, we don't need to talk about it, we just need to vote on those two items that you've published, and then looking at that criteria, that has a history that we've discussed. So my action item, my motion is for the January 26th meeting, that we put both the aux, as well as Northlight Theater. I know that the aux has made their proposal, we know that there have been some council members that have been approached in terms of questions. I haven't seen, I've spoken to Northlight Theater, so Councilmember Nusma, if there is a proposal that is looming, let's make sure that it gets on economic development, right? And then we know what the two asks are, and then it's, you know, up to you and the other members of your, of the organization for Northlight, to make sure that they're meeting with this specific council members that are on economic development, to answer any questions that they may have. And they've reached out to me, and I feel good about their proposal, and that would be my referral. So I want to make sure that I'm going to move at the end of, right now, that we put the aux, as well as Northlight Theater, both on the agenda for the January 26th meeting, if there's a second to support it.
I will second that. Okay. So, Councilmember Braithwaite moves that the aux and Northlight are on the January 26th Economic Development Committee agenda. Councilmember Nusma seconds. Um, so Councilmembers Burns and Reed are requesting to speak on this, both are out of time.
This is, we gotta talk, man, this, you know, this is ARPA, we gotta talk, we gotta find a way to get deep into this.
So, I'll give each of you one minute to, to speak to this motion.
So, I just want to use this as an example, and it's, it's a motion, this is speaking to it, but again, using this as an example, the, this body could determine that, to use your words, Councilmember Braithwaite, expansion and attraction is our number one priority underneath economic development.
And retention.
Well, I'm just using it, I don't, I don't know-
Those are the three things that I said, so I just want to make a clarification.
I don't know if, well, maybe aux is considered that, so we'll just use all that. So we can say, okay, economic development, we know we want to, that's the bucket. So our number one priority, right, is retention, expansion, and attraction. Then we consider, okay, what are all the things that we can do that, that, that helps us achieve that, that priority? And in comes Northlight and aux, and maybe even some other proposals, right? And then, because in the way even Councilmember Nusma suggested it, this would then go to a committee, economic development committee, we would say, hey, we're seeking, uh, proposals that are gonna help towards retention, expansion, and attraction. Two of those proposals, right, being both the aux and Northlight, but we're also accepting others. And then that's when the committee will come into play and vote on it, right? Like, even using that model, we still, there's something missing here, where we haven't decided what is our priority. Is it job creation, which is what I'm really passionate about, getting people employed yesterday, or coming up with the, the infrastructure to do that? Or is it retention, expansion, and attraction? We haven't made that decision as a full council yet. And that's what I want to try to do.
It's all of the above.
All right. Councilmember Reed?
Hold on, real quick, that right there that you just said is 3 million, it can't be all of the above, because we only have 7 million for it, respectfully. So we know at the end of your idea, we're gonna have, right, 3 million less dollars for that particular bucket. I understand we want to do everything, but we don't have everything money, right? So then we, we do the math and say, okay, let's subtract 3 million dollars from it. Now we know, okay, we only have this amount left to do the other work that we know we want to do. That's important that we establish, where do we start first? That's important. That is vital.
All right. Um, all right, so I think Councilmember Braithwaite wants to respond, Paul wants to speak, and Councilmember Reed will be next after that.
Right. Paul, can you tell us what's in the total economic development budget right now?
Um, so the, the short answer, it's around 400,000. When I started, when you and I began working together 10 years ago, it was 2 million, so it's changed.
Right. Thank you. And then out of that, how much, Sarah, if you were to guess, in terms of what we've used historically to help fund economic development projects?
From CDBG?
Yeah.
Really minimal. We have, uh, we, right now have 75,000 that we haven't been using, but-
Right.
-our, our biggest single CDBG economic development, um, loan was 130,000 some time ago.
Yeah.
But we have, for CDBG, it's a really good example of measurable outcomes. You either have to create or retain jobs, or you have to, um, assist, and this is where the equity thing can come in, um, micro, especially low and moderate income microenterprises to be able to get their businesses going.
Right.
So that's another way we can layer some of the CDBG ways of looking at things when we're getting into equity and-
Yes. So I'll, I'll make the real point, Mr. Mayor, and then we can move forward, because there's something on the floor. So when businesses come, they come, right? Businesses come, all sizes, all different forms, all different uses. Like, that's the marketplace, right? So we don't, in the past, we haven't sat on our hands and waited for a bunch of businesses to come through the door, to then evaluate them, and then vote on them. They come as they come, based on opportunities that people have been working on. So the only thing that I'm trying to stress here is that we have businesses that have a track record, that have been in the hopper for quite some time, and I hope that we have others to come. But this impact fund, and the need is now, I, I just want to cut through the, the bureaucracy of, we're waiting for something else before we take action on these businesses, because they both have a timeline and a sense of urgency. That's it.
And I just want to clarify, they're requesting ARPA money, correct? Or no, not entirely?
So I haven't seen Northlight. Um, I can say that, I think at the economic development meeting, you will recall that they are looking at a multiple funds to get to their 7 million dollars, which include looking at our partnership with Cook County and other governmental, all the things that you see on there. So I don't want to get into the weeds now, I just want to make sure that we're talking about it at the January 26th meeting. It's not a vote tonight, it's a vote to make sure that that discussion takes place. That's it.
Councilmember Reed.
Yeah, so, um, I, to, to the specific motion, I guess it seems like this is a motion of places on the agenda as a special order of business to actually approve the allocations for, uh, or is that what you're suggesting, that we're putting on the agenda to approve for the 26th?
I'm, I heard just the proposal, they'd be on the economic development committee agenda, and that could result in discussion.
I'm sorry, oh, for economic development?
Yeah.
Then, well, I don't understand why the heck we're even making a motion at council to put something on the economic development.
I'm making it clear that it's coming back to council as action, those two items. Does it need a motion? Probably not.
Did you say EDC or council?
We're saying ec, economic development.
Okay.
Making it clear, as well making it clear to the businesses, to make sure that they do their outreach, so after economic development committee meeting, they will come before council. It's a statement. Whatever action or course makes sense to everyone, I'm just making a very clear statement that it's gonna happen. That's it.
Okay. Well, I, I agree that I think we need to, um, well, one, I'll just say that, if, if this is just to put on the agenda for economic development, which was unclear, it's not appropriate for the council to, you're the chair of economic development, just put it on, and you can state, hey, this is what we're gonna do. But as far as the actual, uh, you know, matter at hand, I, I tend to side with Councilmember Burns, in that I think we, you know, this isn't the regular, uh, economic development or budgeting process where we would take things, um, and, and you know, I support some of the things that we're gonna be talking about, economic development, but this isn't, um, and this is something I think Councilmember Nusma has also brought up, um, this, this isn't the regular budgeting process, this isn't regular economic development, this is specifically the American Rescue Plan Act money for recovery from COVID-19, um, and-
Councilmember? So your time's up as well?
Okay. And, and I, I think we need to really understand, but keep that in mind and keep that at forefront, you know, I don't want to discuss the merits of any of the two particular projects now, I mean, we can certainly do that at, at economic development, but, um, I, I think looking at some of these projects in totality makes a whole lot of sense, particularly as, uh, you know, as I've tried to illustrate before, the, the funding that we're receiving, if we were to, you know, scale this down to our own personal lives, and, you know, scale it down-
Councilmember?
If I can, I mean, if I can-
This is really not, I mean, we're no longer on the topic of the motion, your time expired a long time ago. Can you bring your remarks to the close in the next couple of seconds?
Well, I, I want to, okay, well, we can, I think the motion's out of order, but I do want to talk about ARPA, as, as a whole, so I mean-
Okay. So, so Councilmember Braithwaite, um, we can, I, I spaced that you're the chair of the committee anyhow, so certainly you don't need a vote of the city council to put an agenda item on your own committee's agenda.
And I said either a referral or for action, but I wanted to answer the particular concern. So now that everybody's aware, Councilmember Nusma, I mean, we can, you can withdraw, or we can move forward. I'm, we're just making it clear that we're gonna vote and move on it.
Yeah.
We're gonna, you don't want to-
If you're withdrawing the motion, I'll withdraw in a second.
Okay, there you go.
I, I would recommend withdrawing the motion, you're the chair of the committee, put the items on the agenda.
Yeah, it will be voted.
Yeah, okay. All right. All right, the motion is withdrawn, and so now let's bring forward Ms. Flax to move forward, uh, in this presentation.
If, if I may, Mr. Mayor, and then I will, I promise you I will pass to, to Ms. Flax, uh, to respond to something Councilmember Burns said. At the bottom of this matrix, these are the city council goals from 2019, 2020. Okay?
Right there.
Right here. So perhaps that's an exercise for a future meeting, but that's, that's how, that's how staff would attack how we look at it, and then I'm gonna pass this on to Ms. Flax, so we can continue the conversation.
Point of information, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Can, can we get an update? How many members have, are out of time?
So at this time, Councilmember Braithwaite is out of time, Councilmember Wayne has a minute 30 left, Councilmember Nusma is out of time, Councilmember Burns is out of time, Councilmember Suffolk has five minutes left.
Of course.
Councilmember Revel has four minutes and 30 seconds left, Councilmember Reed is out of time, and Councilmember Fleming has two minutes left.
I, I would like to make a motion to suspend the, the time rule today. I mean, we're talking about ARPA, this is, uh, you know, a huge discussion, almost everyone here is out of time, uh, so I'd like to move to suspend the rule to allow for more than five minutes on discussion on, you know, we're going through economic development, social services, this is a huge discussion, if we're taking this whole thing and saying, you only have-
So your motion is to suspend the rule and have no limitations on time at all tonight?
Or 10 minutes, I don't know, no, no, no limit?
Let's reset the clock at each section.
Right, yeah.
Okay. Um, so do you want to make that motion?
I, I move that we reset the clock for each sec, uh, section.
Second.
Uh, so Councilmember Reed moves that the five-minute clock is reset at each section, I'm not totally sure if I know how to define section, but clearly we're about to get to the new one.
I guess sections are social services, economic development, workforce development, I don't know if there's another.
Okay. Um, so with the clerk, is there any discussion on this motion? Uh, seeing none, would the clerk please call the role on the motion?
Um, Councilmember Wayne?
Aye.
Councilmember Nusma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
No.
Councilmember Suffolk?
No.
Councilmember Revel?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Fleming? Council, Councilmember Braithwaite?
Uh, with six voting in favor and one voting against, the motion carries, and there will be five-minute limits renewed with each section, um, beginning, for instance, now. Uh, Ms. Flax.
Thank you, Mayor Biss. Um, social services is one of our categories, um, and we are recommending that we focus on and determine the best ways forward on three key areas. Mental health, with the focus being on a living room, we are, um, working with other services that, for example, that Councilmember Fleming noted, the, which is the mobile response teams, and they are looking forward to having a living room-type facility to be able to direct people in crisis to, or to prevent people from getting to, into crisis. And one of the things that, uh, I think is important is, we can fund the, um, upfront capital costs with ARPA, but we also need to make sure of, um, sustaining funds, whether it comes from the city, or hopefully from somebody else, like the Illinois Department of Public Health. So that is really what we are recommending for the mental health effort right now, continuing to focus on where to put a living room, and with what partners, but also then how to get long-term funding for it. And, you know, Austin just got one with $800,000 a year budget, so I think that's a good place to start. Childcare, we've heard a lot from our childcare providers, and this is actually a category where we really do have to work together across our silos or our buckets, because we absolutely need to help our childcare providers get back on their feet, and you've heard some very eloquent details from childcare providers. There are some things, for example, State of Illinois came out with some help, uh, that's all coming through ARPA or earlier funding, but one of the, um, organ, one of the levels of childcare that has gotten virtually no help is, um, part-day childcare centers, and also our, um, small home childcare centers have not gotten as much assistance, and those are critical. But the EECC really is a very well organized group of childcare providers and specialists, and I recommend that we continue to work with them from their ask and come back to council with more specific requests. We continue to explore other sources for that funding, too. Just came out a email from the state with more money for childcare workers to get scholarships. So, again, even after we fund something, in some cases, we may end up finding that there's something else come up, and if we see that, we're gonna try to take advantage of it. But we gotta get into the weeds on it, so we can come back with a, a more official re, uh, recommendation to you. The Latinx Welcoming Center, I think this is really critical, this is something that we've been talking about, the needs of our Latino community, and our immigrant communities overall, but this is something that we know from our own experience of putting together a fund specifically for undocumented people, that we got very little response to when it was housed here at the city, that we have to do more to reach out to this community. And, um, I've got a very enthusiastic group of people who want to work with us on that, and again, I think opportunity for long, um, ongoing operating support through other sources, which is critical. So our recommendation is that we focus on these three areas, and we come back and get those functional before we go out and start looking at other things that we may need, which may be in those same categories, or, um, could be other categories. Any questions or comments on, um, social services?
Why don't we move ahead to affordable housing, and we can discuss those as one-
Happy to do that.
As one section, if you will.
One section in a very short period of time, that's good. Affordable housing. This is another one where we cannot, I could take all 43 million and spend it on affordable housing, and we still would need more. And we clearly can't do that, so, um, we're recommending four approaches. One is, we have to see who is going to be fundable through IDA for low-income housing tax credits, um, before we try to make any allocations on specific housing projects. Uh, there are some applications that have been put in for the preliminary project assessment, which is what you have to get through IDA before you can apply for 9% tax credits. That, uh, information will be, who is moving forward will be determined in the middle of December. Um, I recommend that we sit and wait just that period of time, and then staff contact people, anybody who's moving forward, and come back with information about their proposals, and how well they match with, uh, the city's, uh, goals, and, um, our other, uh, you know, priorities. Uh, one thing I just want to do to give you some perspective is, you know, most of these projects are gonna be someplace in the neighborhood of $25 million total budget, give or take, I mean, that's what most of tax credit things are going in, at least. Um, historically, uh, we tend to get requests from about a million five to two and a half million of what's known as soft money in the housing world, and that is the money that makes tax credit projects work, because tax credits never pay for it all, and, uh, local funding and local commitment is a key thing in getting ARPA, uh, not ARPA, excuse me, um, IDA approval, because otherwise, everybody asks them for the soft money, too. So that's the process on those that we're recommending. Affordable, resilient housing, retrofit. We had this great Partners for Places grant, uh, and we have a, uh, proposal that was developed by Center for Neighborhood Technologies, that, um- by Center for Neighborhood Technologies that I'm meeting with Cara next week and some other people on how can we implement this. The whole goal of this is to improve the, both the energy efficiency and the climate resiliency of our naturally occurring affordable housing, if you will. And I think that's a key thing for CARP and also for our equity, because these are the people who have the worst health outcomes and things like that because their housing is contributing to that. So that, again, I think it's really important, but I don't have a specific amount to ask you for right now. We've got to get into the weeds on that. We have other sources that we want to layer in there, which could be CDBG, we're talking to SITA, if we can shake loose weatherization, we may get lead grant from Cook County. If we can layer this funding, we can do way more than we can do if we just use ARPA. So again, a lot more work, but I think for a really good cause. Assistance for small local landlords, you've heard from two of our small local landlords. I really believe we need to put together a little task force, and we've talked about that potentially being a task force that already in the Housing and Community Development Committee, I think that's critical, because they do have needs, there are certain needs we can't fund, and there are other needs we can, and we have to work out how we can do that. Permanent 24/7 shelter, we know that's a need, too. Again, this is an area, I have been on a series of calls with the Continuum of Care. We cannot fund this by ourselves, and it is something that the Continuum of Care has been talking to both the state and the county about the needs of the entire continuum. We need to work with them all and figure out how our funding, we have this home ARP, which is more likely to be what staff would recommend than plain old ARP, because that is very much targeted specifically to address homeless needs. Can be used for shelter, which is something you can never use normal home for, and they also have this just, really, it's true home, very arcane way that you can fund the development of new units, but because the people you have to serve, these qualified tenants, are basically homeless people, you're going to need the equivalent of project-based support. If you can't get project-based support, you can put together a fund that is a reserve fund that subsidizes the operating. Well, that's a neat theory, but when you have $1.3 million, you can't really do that by yourself. So again, how do we layer that in with another larger project, or how do we use it for shelter? So no decisions, but what I'm hoping to get is that you think this is the right approach to dealing with these things.
Thank you. Any comments or questions about what we just heard about? Councilmember Revel, followed by Wynn, followed by Newsma.
Well, I think the strategy that you've outlined, Sarah, not only, you know, the specific programs, but also basically designating the Social Services Committee to work with our childcare community, et cetera, to flesh out the specifics of the programs under Social Services, and then for the affordable housing component with the Housing and Community Development Committee, I think those two committees are both really well-positioned to work with you and, and community partners to come up with the, you know, the specific dollar amounts that we'll be looking to ARPA to fund. So I think, I really support wholeheartedly the, what you've outlined here, I think it sounds like a really good way to move forward.
In addition, we also do have a little bit of regular home, and we do have some affordable housing fund money, so it really is how do we, how do we use those funds most effectively? Thank you.
Councilmember Wynn, followed by Newsma.
Thank you, Sarah. This is very helpful in terms of separating it out, and your explanation of what are the things that could amplify our money, and when they're arriving, and why we need to wait to hear what those things are. I have one specific question about the IDA tax credit, credits when you were talking about the soft money contribution, that would be, is that a soft money contribution from a city that then gets, that gets in that catalyzes the?
Yes. If you may recall, we are putting $2 million into the Anne Rainey Apartments. That was that infamous soft money. Soft money means you're never going to get it paid back unless they, you know, it's the stuff that makes the deals work, but it really is critical, and that is something that can make a project more competitive.
So I have one other question about that. So could soft money be, for instance, the land that is donated?
Yes, it could. In the case of Lot 1, it may be something like that, exactly.
So I was thinking about that for Lot 1, because I don't know that we quite meet that, but certainly that's a possibility.
Yes, and any kind of contribution, and with any donation also comes the ability of land is the donation tax credit, which is another way of providing, of helping fund. Affordable housing finance is really quite complicated, so.
So one other aspect of that, thinking of Lot 1, we would not be able to, in some way, use HACs property as soft money, would, could HAC and the city join together and make that as a joint soft money contribution?
Absolutely. I mean, that, that can absolutely be a joint land contribution that would get tax credits as well.
Okay.
And land is one of the costs in a market like Evanston, which really drives up housing costs. Our land's really expensive, guys.
Yeah, yes, okay, thank you.
Councilmember Newsma.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Sarah, yes, generally supportive of everything here. Just running through the list really quick on the social services side of things, I think Councilmember Revel kind of confirmed that that conversation would be had with, at the Social Services Committee, right? So the living room, I think is a great concept, addresses the mental health need or starts to address that. I would be concerned, as I'm sure you are as well, about making sure we have a long-term source of funding, right? And so we're not just setting something up and not sure where it's going to go after two or three years, so.
Absolutely.
Yeah, we want to make sure that had a long lifespan, that we had taken into account at the, at the planning phase. The Latinx Welcome Center, another great idea, I'm not sure if you, how far this has been thought through, if there's locations that anyone has in mind, or what's the picture to look like?
Really preliminary, really, I don't want to share anything because it's so preliminary, but I think it is important that we find a physical site for this, and one that is readily accessible.
Whether that's a standalone site or co-located on an existing city property or partner property, but we don't need to discuss that now, but a lot of questions need to be answered before we're ready to pull the trigger on funding, but I think that's a great idea.
Absolutely.
On affordable housing, I will, you know, agree with you, you know, 150% that we need a permanent solution to our 24/7 homeless shelter, and I assume that connections is, for the homeless, is part of this discussion.
Absolutely.
We don't need to go into those details right now, because we all know, you know, the urgent need, and regardless of what ward it's in or where it happens to be located in the city, you know, we need a permanent solution that makes sense for the residents and of the facility, as well as the neighbors and the residents of Evanston. And yes, to reiterate what Councilmember Wynn said, if there's a way we can leverage additional money by using a little bit of ARPA money to get a lot of money from somewhere else, let's do that.
That's the goal.
Let's do that 10 times over. Thanks.
And, and the operating money for the social services is absolutely critical, because we could take the amount we normally give out through CDBG and local funds, the human services funds, and it could be scooped up to keep one organization operating or one facility operating, and that would not be fair to everything else we need to do.
Thank you very much.
Keep going.
So I think on to the next section, right?
We're not going to go into this in detail, that's going to be from, but we really do recommend that these types of projects are going to go more traditionally through the APW, rather than necessarily coming through the other special committees, but we do want to acknowledge that anything that we work on with lead service line replacements would have a real component for job training and things like that, that we really want to look at. So inclusive and equitable recovery.
I think Councilmember Newsma had a question on that.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, I don't want, I won't take up five minutes on water and sewer infrastructure, but this is one where there's not a committee that's designated, so I just want to point out that the Utilities Committee does overlap with a lot of what we're talking about here, so that may be an appropriate channel for discussion and additional public input. And I'm sure we are not going to spend more ARPA money on lead service replacement than we need to, you know, given the extremely high likelihood of other sources of revenue becoming available for that.
Exactly, and some of it's already coming out, I mean, some has been discussed already, but through the infrastructure, but there could be also more in the Build Back Better, which also, by the way, is another place where both childcare and mental health services, so another reason not to spend everything at once on those. So inclusive and equitable recovery, one of the things that Paul noted is it isn't different categories, it's where you spend it and how you focus it. And so this is really looking at our communities that have been the least invested in, and the ARPA way that we can easily qualify them is our qualified census tracts, which is a HUD qualification, so these are census tracts that have a high percentage of low-income people, and then there is also this lovely thing called a DDA, which is a difficult development area, which is a place where there are low-income people, and it's really expensive to develop housing and everything else. And 8092 happens to be, which is the heart of the 5th Ward, happens to be one of those census tracts. I really haven't had a chance to research this yet, but I intend to contact Treasury, because I really think 8102 in South Evanston, which was our other NSP census tract, has many of those same characteristics and needs help. It is one of our areas where we have some of our highest immigrant populations, it's one of our most diverse populations, and that's not.
Sarah, I'm going to stop you there, because this was something that really, I mean, when we were, been talking about this over the past several months, this is really important information, because we're, traditionally, there's strings attached to other buckets or sources of funding. With ARPA, there really aren't any strings attached to those census districts.
Yeah. If you're in an area that they agree meets this qualification, you can pretty much do anything, because you're improving an under-invested area that has been desperately harmed by COVID condition. And so when Paul and I are saying, for example, this is why on the chart we put the Hill Business District and the other business district in, there's money that can come from both sources, and that's why it's hard to really pin down the buckets. But I really do believe that we need to have planning groups in these neighborhoods. I think that is absolutely critical, and it's very much like participatory budget, and in fact, there's a great deal of potential overlap between these two areas, because we are really trying to get to the people whose voices are not generally heard and say, what do you need to thrive, and figure that out working with them. The businesses, the individuals, the landlords, we need to look holistically at the needs of these communities, and we need to address it differently from what we've ever done. More planning, but very important.
All right, so first to speak on this is Councilmember Newsma.
Noting that one of the allowable expenditures here is investment in parks and outdoor recreation, I am wondering if the Parks and Recreation, the Parks Board, is that a board or committee?
I'm not sure.
The board, if they might have a role here, if we could ask them for their thoughts. And also, I think to the extent we can upfront define a timeline for, you know, how we're going, when we're going to be having these discussions and when decisions will be made, making that timeline known, I think that would be helpful, not only for this, but for everything else, really.
Right. That will be coming back with you next, once we have sort of agreement on what we're proceeding with, that's the whole plan on that. But you're absolutely right, the other thing is, Paul and I were talking about just looking at 8092, because it was really, what types of things are we already thinking of that are going to happen there? Well, the skate park, how does that tie into, how's that going to change that business district, and, you know, who's going to be there, and so all of this is connected. We really have to look at things as interconnected. We have a new piece of land that we just acquired, and that is part of the old railroad right-of-way that is north of Foster, it's a diagonal chunk of it that doesn't have perfect access, but it would be great if we could figure out ways to maybe acquire some of those additional parcels and develop more housing there. So there, again, and this is in the TIF, and so we have to be able to layer that funding in and use it all appropriately, it's just a ton of stuff we've got to figure out, but it's all related, and I think we need to have some planning specifically with people in those neighborhoods about how to approach it. That got us kind of through, I alluded to participatory budgeting being part of that, but I absolutely agree with Councilmember Burns and Councilmember Reed.
Hold on one second, Councilmember Reed, were you?
No, I was.
Okay, yep.
It is something we need to get started on, because everything I've seen is, they say you need about a year to plan and implement, that this is not something that should be done rapidly, because that really does away with the feeling that people have any say. And, and I think that it's something we just need to get agreement that we need to get moving on, and then we have to go about defining how to do that.
Councilmember Reed.
That's where I was going to chime in. I agree, that was something that I was going to come back in and say that I think one of the things that I hope we can leave tonight doing is, we've had at least two members express interest in being on the committee that will begin the process of developing the PB process, and so I'm, I've expressed interest in being on that committee, and I think we should name that committee and get it up and running now.
So let me speak to that. There are actually three members. What I, what I took down at a previous discussion was that Councilmembers Newsma, Burns, and yourself all wanted to be a part of that. I have been working to identify both partners and plan to present to you. To be honest, we're making really good progress, and would hope before the end of the year to be able to present to the three of you a proposal. If you want to structure that as a standalone committee or subcommittee of some other entity, I'm certainly supportive of that as well, but I just want to, I want to rest assured that I took to heart the interest that was expressed, both in the three of you participating and in the urgency, and I'm doing what I can to move that forward as fast as possible.
Yeah, and I certainly don't think it should all be on you, I think that's, I think it should be a committee, I think the three of us volunteered for a committee, and I think that committee should be a part of the process that you were, whatever you're doing now, I think the three of us should be a part of that, and instead of you coming to us with a fully, well, no big plan is really fully baked when it comes to council, but a nearly somewhat gelatinous big plan that.
Is gelatinous the opposite of baked?
I don't know, whatever. It's kind of squishy, not solid yet. So when that, I think we should be a part of that process, and so I would love for that committee to get up and running soon than later, and then see what you have and be a part of whatever you're developing, because I, Councilmember Burns and I, back in our old days when we were in the Clerk's office, did a whole ton of research on PB, met with the Great Cities Institute, which I'd imagine is who you're talking to, maybe even Taya Crum, Taya something, so, you know, I'd love to be a part of it.
Paul had already taken you through our draft of the criteria, I don't think we need to talk about that further. So it's the next steps, and that is really just to make sure that we are taking away what you want us to move forward on, but you need more information, if anything to say, hold tight, or, but, you know, just where we are on this, so.
So are there any?
Just listed them in the order they were discussed, so.
Any comments, questions, or reactions to this?
Is this online, I'm sorry?
It is not, but we will put it online, we were making changes too late, sorry.
Councilmember Newsma.
So I don't think we finished the discussion on the proposed Climate Action and EJ Bucket, so I don't want to leave that hanging in the interest of the issue, and just closing that discussion, what are we going to do? What are we going to do?
Don't have a staff person in that position.
We do. Yeah. Kara Pratt has been on board for a while.
Thank you for, can I suggest maybe between now and the next time we discuss it in January, to have a discussion with her to come up with a budget number and then decide where you'd like to move it from? I think that would be my suggestion that I'd be willing to support. And then it's something you could take action on and build on in January. Makes sense?
If we're taking this straw poll, I'm curious what other folks have to say.
Councilmember Reed?
I am of the opinion, while I am happy to support Councilmember Newsma's proposal, I almost think his proposal is quite conservative. And so, you know, I think that, you know, the 1.5 million is almost a floor. I don't know if we really need staff to, if we need to put more work on staff's plate for, I mean, I think we've discussed, you know, this proposal about allocating this money has been floating for quite a while. I feel like it's at least a couple of months at this point. And so I would be comfortable moving forward with the 1.5 million dollars.
Councilmember Revel.
Well, I obviously would be glad to support a one and a half million dollar CARP bucket. The unanswered question is, where are we going to, what, where are we going to pull money from the other buckets to create this CARP and EJ bucket? So I think that's the conversation that needs to be had between now and January.
Yeah. I think one of the things I'm noticing is that, you know, CARP should be an overriding kind of priority in every category, which speaks to, you know, Councilmember Burns's, you know, kind of desire to define some priorities. But for example, in the affordable housing bucket, retrofitting of affordable housing properties, that line item could be taken out of affordable housing and put into CARP.
Right.
So it's this kind of discussion we would have to have to define what would go in the CARP or the climate action bucket and what would go in the affordable housing bucket. Because we don't, the flip side of creating a climate action bucket is that no, everybody else is off the hook or feels like they're off the hook for thinking about CARP. And that is not the desired outcome.
I do want to stress that, I mean, to me, the choice is allocate a million and a half to CARP or allocate 43 million to CARP, with the understanding that we shouldn't be spending a dime in this city without thinking about CARP. But I understand your point. I think Ms. Ganderzki wanted to add something.
So for, for instance, the retrofitting example, we could come back with a proposal that can go either to committee or can go to council. And that would delineate how much in ARPA funds we would need for that project. As Sarah said, Ms. Black said that we have to do a little bit more research to see what that cost looks like, given other funds. And so that in of itself would earmark CARP funds, so to speak.
Councilmember Reed, followed by Braithwaite.
I just want to note, while I think what I just heard was very aspirational, that every, you know, all the money would be, you know, we'd run it through a lens of CARP. But again, we're talking about 43 million dollars, a small amount of, relative to our overall budget, our annual budget, small amount of money. We've already spent, what, 20% of the money? We spent 8 million? I don't know math person. 20% of the money, 20 some odd percent, I think. And we didn't, I don't remember running any of those, the 20% that we spent already. I don't remember running that through a CARP lens or, you know, really thinking about the environmental impacts of what we did. We bought vehicles. Did we buy environmentally friendly vehicles? Did we think about any of that then? And so the aspiration of saying just every bucket is going to, you know, think about CARP is great. I wish we would do it. But realistically, I don't see that happening unless we specifically set aside money and say, this money is going to be focused on CARP. Because I surely would be, I wouldn't be comfortable with just thinking that equity or that social services were going to be built into everything that we did. I think we, just like we set aside a pot of money for that, CARP is just as important. Thank you.
Councilmember Braithwaite.
So this is just on a different subject, but the same slide. And I've been listening to two different conversations just regarding the welcoming center. And so the label is Latinx welcoming center. However, we've heard all night that, you know, the city of Evanston is multicultural, including a Caribbean descent. And within the context of that, I think it may, however I understand and respect the large number of Latinx, but we also have other members from different countries represented here in town. So is that the label? Or what do we need to add then so that it's welcoming to all ethnicities? Because we've had that discussion and I've received a couple of messages and emails on the subject.
That's something, actually, I'd like to look more into how the Illinois Department of Public Health defines them too, because they do, as what I've seen so far, and I haven't done a ton of research, have, many of them have a focus. But that doesn't mean they're exclusively one group. Our Latinx population is by far our largest non-English-speaking group and our largest immigrant group. And so it's, I think, has to be a focus of that, but it doesn't necessarily have to be exclusive. One of the things that I found when we were doing the, when we had an influx of immigrants back in 2017, we had a lot of immigrants from very different places. And in many cases, the organizations that were resettling them had to connect them with organizations in Chicago or other suburbs because they already had a base of language skills and things like that. So I don't think there's a single answer to that. That's not very, may not be very helpful, but I think we need to learn more about it and figure out how we can expand. But I think our start has to be focusing on addressing the Latinx needs for sure and expanding on other needs because absolutely, we have Haitians, we have any number of, we have a number of people coming from different parts of Africa. We've got Middle Eastern. In some cases, I think we would coordinate with Skokie because they have more immigrant groups and more languages in Skokie than we do. When we were working on the census, I think they had 59 languages in their schools, for example. We haven't gotten quite to that challenge level. But it is something that isn't going to be done just by us. I hope that makes sense. But I mean, we have to work with all these different partners and figure out how to address those needs.
So the question was raised just again to bring awareness to what you just shared. And I think we want to be mindful that the label reflects the diversity that you just talked about.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Councilmember Burns.
I might just like to make two separate motions. One motion is to formally create the Participatory Budgeting Committee, whether we need to take a vote on it or some action that you can take, Mayor Biss. I'd like to leave knowing that we've done that. I think we have three councilmembers that have volunteered. So I'd like to make that motion.
I'll second it.
Does your motion include the designation of the chair of the committee?
How does that work? Is it?
Well, typically, the, in this case, I think you would have that authority, but I would certainly volunteer myself for chair of the PB committee.
You could just include it in the motion, right? You could say, the motion.
Yeah. Councilmember Reed, a motion that Councilmember Reed be the chair of the newly, a new committee to look into participatory budgeting.
And just in light of the fact that I've been working on this, do you want me to be, does your motion include me as a member or no?
Of course. I'm more the mayor.
So that's probably not true. So Councilmember Burns moves that we create a committee on participatory budgeting with members, Councilmembers Newsma, Councilmember Burns, and Mayor Biss, and member and chair, Councilmember Reed. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Revel, seconds. Is there any discussion?
As a committee of four, OMA would be in effect.
As a committee of any size.
As a committee, oh, exactly. But is OMA still in effect as a committee of three?
Yes.
Because it applies to the three then, or the four, whatever.
Right. Once it's a committee, it's a public body and OMA applies.
Okay. And full favor of transparency, but I think what we need now is just some, a forum that allows for, you know, some very productive discussions, which doesn't necessarily have to be a public forum, at least to start. So is a committee the way to go? Or is there another mechanism that would allow that discussion to be able?
Well, I was kind of advocating to continue through informal discussions, but I totally understand that people don't feel like that's adequate. And so that's the purpose of this motion, I believe.
And yes, I think, like, I think this needs to start with some informal discussions before we open up the door and have a bigger public discussion.
I think we're further along than you may think.
Okay.
Yeah. Councilmember Reed and I extensively went through a participatory budgeting journey. Some members up here probably recall. I know Councilmember Wen, if you recall, we've been, we've bought it. So I mean, that's, we're much further along than you think. We were kind of fully networked in to the PB community in the Chicago area. And I'm sure can, yeah, already talking, have already have some relationships established with people that Mayor Biss is talking to now. So I think we're ready.
Okay.
Are you comfortable with the motion?
I'm comfortable.
All right. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember, Councilmember Wen?
Aye.
Councilmember Newsma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Revel?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Braithwaite?
Aye.
With six voting in favor and none voting against, the motion carries. Councilmember Burns, you had a second motion, I believe?
Yeah. And I don't know if this needs a motion, but I think the next thing I'd like for council to get from staff is just some way that we can create goals and priorities as a council as it relates to ARPA funding. So goals and priorities. I know the previous council went through a similar process, but we have, I think, four new members. I'd like us specifically to go through goals, establishing goals and priorities as it relates to ARPA.
I completely agree with you, and I'm happy to commit to support you with that. I would suggest it doesn't require a motion.
Okay.
Can I suggest a mechanism relating to the motion that was not made?
Well, given that I was going to call on you next anyways, Councilmember.
Sure. Then I'll just use my, well, now I forget what I was going to originally speak about. But to that point, I do think that we really need to settle in on the goals. I think if all of us, you know, came up, if offline, there was a poll, a poll that was sent out and, you know, said, hey, everybody list your, you know, top three priorities for ARPA or your top two in each bucket, and then vote for four, we can come out with our top three priorities. Because I really think, you know, if our top priority, Councilmember Burns and I and Paul were just having a sidebar conversation, if our top priority is, what was the example that was used, the 15 million, whatever it was, if our top priority was childcare, sure. Let's say our top priority was childcare or mental health, for example. And we, and we had staff come back and determine that, you know, in order to meet our goals on, you know, affordable housing, childcare, mental health, we'd have to spend, you know, 30 million dollars, 40 million dollars, the remainder of the money. I think we should have very clear in mind what it is that we are giving up and what opportunities we're missing before we continue to spend more of the money, especially given that 20% of it is already gone.
Councilmember Wen.
Well, I think that's a, I think it's important to have the goals. I think the goals that the staff has put up here are about, which were the goals that were adopted by the, in 2019 and 2020 by the entire city council for all, you know, for everything that was going to happen by the city council, actually are some that I would start with again. And, you know, I don't think that this is, should be, I don't want to spend a lot of time on this. I recognize it's really important, but actually, I think that this would be something that would be fairly straightforward. Each of the last times that we established our strategic city council goals, we did it within one meeting. And because we all knew what they were and were able to come to consensus on them very, very quickly. So, and we also have had the staff do all of this work, you know, already on this. You know, it feels like, yes, we have these, we should have these goals, but we have a 23-page memo here that is laying out what the staff thinks that we, the best use and ways that we should spend this money. So I think that we should keep that in mind. I'm not quite sure where I'm going with this, but I think that we do have goals and they, you know, at least the starting lineup is right there. So I don't want us to get tangled up in that because those are the goals that this, the staff has been working with all along to come up with this. I appreciate how important it is to have goals and to adopt them so that they're our guiding star, but let's, let's do this really efficiently. But with great deal of heart and care, so.
Thank you.
Can I take two seconds to respond if no one else is?
What's that?
Can I take two seconds to respond if no one else is asking for recognition?
You got it.
Okay. I agree. I think this is a very good beginning point. I think it was at a committee that we serve on together, Councilmember Wen. It was a line that will stick with me. Someone in one of our committees said that her father always told her that you can have, Jesus, it was you can have, you can have anything you want, but you can't have everything that you want. And that's a whole lot up there. And so I think we got to figure out, you know, that's everything. And we got to figure out what the thing is, what are the things that we want? Because we've only got 43 million dollars and that is a, that is a multi-year, 300 million dollar, you know, for 10 years, you know, set of goals. So we can't have everything, but we can.
As our guiding principles. So I agree, let's have some guiding principles on this, but I don't want us to, I mean, this shouldn't, should not be hard. I think we could probably go down the list right now. But so let's just put together a list, vote on it, make sure the staff gets to add some things to this list, because they've been working on this for so long, so.
So on that point, Ms. Ganderzki.
So not to be dense here, I apologize, I've recovered from the flu, so I'm hoping I'm understanding everything correctly. I guess I'm still a little bit confused as to what we're walking away with tonight. So I guess what I'm hearing is a couple of different things. Does council want time to evaluate this criteria to say, yes, this is what we think should be the measure of what we're looking at? Does council want time to prioritize the various items that were presented tonight in a, in a priority schedule? You know, not, not by category, but like as a whole?
I think, let me try to summarize what I think I heard, and folks can weigh in if I get it wrong. I don't think there were many specific red flags raised about concrete items. So I don't think the feedback is, hey, Paul, hey, Sarah, pump the brakes on this specific thing. Obviously, there are some specific questions about some, you know, especially around the ambassador program. And obviously, no one's committing at this point to vote yes on everything that comes to council. But I think the directional, I think, was positive. I think there's strong interest in understanding the criteria better and having an opportunity to really dig into them and weigh in on them. I think there's a pending discussion on a potential CARP bucket that I expect to come back in January. And I think I would recommend that that come back as a sort of ready-to-go proposal so that it doesn't have to get workshopped up here. And then I think there is this interest in kind of, let's just sort of say it, you know, maybe doing some work that would have benefited all of us to do months ago around articulating this city council's priorities, which I agree with everybody. This is not, it's not going to be mysterious. It's not going to, you know, there's not going to be one person is for affordable housing, one person is for unaffordable housing. But I think, I think it's, I think there has been an interest expressed in articulating those priorities and then having those priorities at the ready as a tool to make sure these criteria are heading in the right direction and as a tool to evaluate specific proposals that will come down the pike, kind of flowing from what we heard tonight from Nathan and Paul and Sarah.
And I just want to be clear. For me, that's, I don't know if I'm on the same page. And I just want to be clear, for me, that's, I don't know if I'm on the same page with that. I think at the end of this, we should, which is why I put in there related to ARPA, right? There's, because I don't want this to be too wide to where it's still hard for us to take action. So I'm saying we specifically, specifically, we should come up with goals. I think we'll fly, we'll breeze through the goals. I think really what we need to understand is like the ranking of priorities. We all want to do everything on that list and more, but we're going to have to make some hard decisions on what do we want to start with in each bucket? Because as soon as we do that first thing, we have to subtract away from ARPA money or any other bit of money, right? This is a finite amount of money. We all want to do everything, but we have to start with the first thing for each bucket, figure out what that costs us, subtract that, and then move on to the second priority. That's what I would like to see us do. Again, I think, I agree with Councilmember Wen, I think we could probably get through it now, but it's late, but I think childcare is probably going to come out. Climate action resiliency, for me, I think that should be in this priority. Mental health care, but that, that's what I want to get out of this. And then from that, for mental health care, for example, what could, might bubble to the top is a living room. And then staff knows that their one focus to start, right, is to look into all the different living room type models for us to review as a board. And maybe that can go through an RFP process, through social service committee, returning point, and other people. So I just, I want to describe it a bit so we're on the same, I just want to make sure we're on the same page. Thank you.
Councilmember Nusma?
What I'm hearing is not a need for overriding goals for all CARP, all ARPA categories, but prioritize goals for each individual category, right? Because we have, in a sense, prioritized how we're going to spend the entire bucket by allocating it to each of the six or seven or 12 or 18 buckets. You know, so that, that priority discussion has already been had, and hopefully, we'll be rejiggering it a little bit to put some money in a climate action bucket. But that priority discussion is separate than how you're going to spend the economic development money.
Yeah, sub priorities or whatever we're going to call it.
Right, so you're not talking about one set of overarching criteria, you're talking about, you know, several sets of different criteria.
Exactly. And retrofitting could be a priority, which is why I'm not sure if we should kick it out. I mean, we should have like a goal of, I mean, in my opinion, $3 million towards CARP. But I think we could, if you set it as goals, if you work with Kara Pratt to just come up with priorities like climate action resiliency priorities, one that could be retrofitting, then we could explore that more and see what the cost would be and what buckets it would come out of, which I think City Manager Ganderzki was suggesting. I don't know if we need to set it aside right now, let's just work through, let's figure out what the priorities are for that and then develop costs, and then we'll have a better sense of what bucket. Right, yeah, right.
With that, thank you all. This brings us to call of the wards, beginning with Councilmember Wen.
Thank you to our city staff for this. I think this was very, very helpful. And thank you to my fellow councilmembers for a really lively and useful discussion. That's all. Thank you.
Councilmember Nusma?
I just want to extend my condolences to the Dennison family for their tragic loss earlier, or last week, I should say. And let's keep their family in mind, let's keep their community in mind, and let's keep violence prevention as one of our priorities at the city, whether it's in the ARPA context or not. We need to interrupt these cycles of violence. That includes investing in everything from affordable housing to social services and childcare, workforce development, all of that is important to, you know, end the cycle of gun violence. And I, for one, personally, am not wanting to concede the fight at the federal level either. I know that, given the current constituency, the current makeup of the Supreme Court, this is probably not a battle we want to pick, but if someone wants to go after DC versus Heller, if someone wants to go after the NRA, count me in. I'm down for that conversation. I also do want to extend thanks to Carolyn Murray for organizing another successful gun buyback program. City manager, interim City Manager Ganderzki alluded to that earlier. So thank you, Ms. Murray, for your continued support.
Councilmember Wen wanted to add something.
Thank you. It's been a very long meeting. I also want to extend my condolences to the Dennison family and all of the families that were impacted by this gun violence. And that means those families that may not actually have had a child there, but everyone in the community. This ripples and ripples and ripples as every single one of these shootings does. And it's, it, once again, we must redouble our efforts to provide social support so that, that this is not something that teenagers think of as an option when they have disagreements or are driving around in a car. So I agree with Councilmember Nusma, it's guns. And we've had many community conversations about this. And, but what we do need to do is address some of the systemic social issues, and I believe, as Councilmember Reed, I believe, was saying earlier, COVID has exasperated, you all know what I meant, all of these issues. And so I, I think the work that we're doing here tonight is going to help that, but I appreciate the gun buyback and any work that we can do to reduce guns and the sale of guns in our community is work well spent. Thank you.
Councilmember Burns?
I also want to share my condolences to all the families and friends impacted by the really tragic shooting, those who, one who is deceased, of course, and as well as some who are home now, hopefully recovering well. And then I believe there's still a victim who was in the hospital fighting for her life. So send my, my well wishes to her and her family. And want to also announce that we are going to have a special city council meeting to discuss violence prevention strategies and solutions on the 20th. City Manager Ganderzki, have we, I know Kimmely was working on it, have we determined a time yet?
Not yet.
Okay. So we'll have a time announced soon, but we are going to have that discussion. We're going to hear from, from city staff and hopefully from the community at large during a public comment about different strategies we can act on. And also just want to say shout out to our youth and young adult outreach team. I want to say shout out to our partner and organizations who are helping with violence prevention, with housing stability, with, work with juveniles who are justice involved. I want to make it very clear that this city has, for a long time, made a commitment to our young people, have made a commitment towards preventing violent prevention. And trust me, there are conflicts and disputes that could be deadly, that are diffused on a daily basis because of the good work with people across the city. And, and we'll continue to do that work and improve on it. And I think December 20th will be a good opportunity for us to continue that work. That is all. Thank you.
Councilmember Revel?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, I join my colleagues in expressing my condolences to the Dennison family and to all the victims and the whole community that's really still suffering from that terrible act, terrible shooting of almost a week ago. I, I'm hopeful that the work that we've been doing in terms of figuring out how to wisely spend our ARPA funds is going to go to building a stronger, more vibrant, more sustainable community and that that's going to help address these, you know, make sure these kinds of things don't happen in the future because we'll, the whole community will be stronger and more resilient. And then I just, I want to mention that on December 16th, I'm having a seventh ward meeting at which representatives from Northwestern University will be present to talk with community members about plans for the rebuilding of Ryan Field and how the community is going to be involved in listening sessions and ways to provide comments and input into the design of that rebuild facility. So it's a virtual meeting at 7:00 PM on December 16th.
Councilmember Reed?
Yes. I want to, again, also add my voice to the condolences to the Dennison family and our community at large. While I wasn't, of course, I wasn't on the scene, I saw a video of, directly of the aftermath. And one of the things that I will never, ever forget in my life is the sound of a mother and family learning that their, that their son and family member has just died of gun violence. And it's chilling. And in watching that recording of the aftermath, it really made me realize that we, we need to do more, particularly, you know, there are some things that we just can't prevent. We can't prevent everything, but when tragedies happen, I think what we can do is step up our response. And, and I commend our police department and city staff for everything they have done and that they have the resources to do. But what I realized is that there is a gap in what we are providing in immediate support for a situation like this. And I hope that is something, you know, with the discussion that we have on the 20th, I joined Councilmember Burns and Braithwaite in calling for that special meeting. I'm hoping that stepping up our victim services is a part of that discussion as well. In the eighth ward, we also will have a ward meeting on December 18th, which is a Saturday at 1:00. As we have had in the past, we typically have those meetings, the last Thursday of every month, but in, because of the holidays with November and December, thus far, we've held those on Saturdays to also provide some weekend opportunities for folks to join in. So there will be Saturday, December 18th at 1:00. Manager Ganderzki, if you're able to join, you know, please, we'd love to have you. And an announcement will go out about that and with the ward newsletter, as well as an agenda for that meeting, so hoping to see eighth ward is there. Certainly, I can tell you now that violence prevention and discussions on victim services will certainly be a part of that ward meeting. So we invite folks from the eighth ward and across the city to join that discussion. And that is the end of my announcements. Thank you.
Councilmember Braithwaite?
I am so sorry. There's one thing I wanted to say, and I wanted to say before we ended, but particularly under the social service, social return on investment, I think the personal financial wellness is something we should remove from that bucket. I don't think we need to spend money on teaching poor folks how to manage money that they don't have. I think we, you know, I think we can take that one out and get a bit of clarity. So thank you.
Councilmember Braithwaite?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of city council. Again, I want to support many of the comments that were said in terms of our need to address the issues of violence as well. My sincere prayers and condolences, not only to the Dennison family, but to all the young adults that were impacted, particularly as they were our students at both Evanston Township and Niles. So prayers going out to all those. I also want to share, and for anyone that visits Valley, condolences to, the gentleman's name is Ricardo. If you go there, it's one of those places that you get to know the staff very well, and he was the maintenance person and janitor that always greeted everyone with a really big, warm smile and was very helpful. His services are this Friday. The last thing that I'd like to share is this Thursday, we have a second ward meeting, 7:00 PM at Robert Crown. We will hear safety reports from our police department. There are a number of neighborhood issues that folks have been looking to hear a report on, so we'll address those as well. I'll also, just as we did with the last city manager search, looking to get feedback from second ward residents in terms of priorities and things that are important, qualifications that are important to them when, when looking for our next city manager, as well, you know, expand on the conversation and listen to my residents' feedbacks as it comes to distributing the ARPA funds. That's it. Thank you.
Thanks to all. And with, and with that, Councilmember Nusma is recognized for a motion.
Pursuant to five ILCS 120 slash 2A, I move that the city council convene into executive session to discuss an agenda item regarding personnel. This agenda item is a permitted subject to be considered in executive session and is an enumerated exception under the Open Meetings Act in five ILCS 120 slash 2A, section C1.
Second.
Councilmember Nusma moves that we resolve into executive session. Councilmember Wen seconds. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Wen?
Councilmember Nusma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Revel?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Braithwaite?
With six voting in favor and none voting against, at 9:48 PM, the Evanston City Council resolves into executive session to begin immediately.